March two thousand and thirteen meeting of the Petroville's plan board. Please rise and call me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We have proceeded. Before we get started, a little housekeeping is in order. If the fire alarm system goes off in the building, it will create a loud ringing of the bells and the horns and sirens and all this stuff that goes off when the fire alarm goes off, as well as some flashing lights. Please treat it seriously. Don't assume that it was said as a prank. Please get up and walk. Do not run to the nearest exit. Exit the building. Stay on the sidewalks. Please do not get in your car and attempt to drive away because if you do, you're going to run right into the fire trucks that are coming the other way. As soon as they've made a thorough inspection of the building and have certified that the building is up for reentry, we'll come back in and finish our meeting. Of course, we use smokers. You can't smoke anywhere in the building on premises. Please keep that in mind. And we'll get right into our applications this evening. First application is Terrence Smalling, thirty-two Potter Avenue, seeks permission to construct new nineteen-by-fifty-foot prefab steel building subject currently located in an E industrial zone. Sir, please come forward to the microphone. Put your stuff at the podium. Give your cards that you sent out. You have the cards. Give those to Carol. Whatever you want to give to the board is fine. Just make sure she gets the cards. Okay, Mr. Smalling, you can leave now as soon as you're done. So you speak into the microphone and tell us all about your application. And the record should show before you begin that we did meet with the applicant and thoroughly went over the application at the published work session that we held last week. Mr. Smalling, floor is yours.
I currently have a water repair shop, thirty-two Potter Avenue, Petroville's Steel Line, water repair. And just need a bigger shop. It's going to be right next to the original shop, which is twenty-four by twenty-four. And it's a prefab steel building, which will be erected right next to the shop. It's already there. It's pretty much all of it.
This is pre- this is the industrial portion of this area, correct? The whole facility industrial. So there's no side yard here. No variance is required. And no setbacks whatsoever. Sir, this is a separate building that will not be attached? There'll be no attachment to the current building? Nobody?
It'll be right next to it. It won't be attached to it. Current building is a wood structure.
And you say prefab. Will this be constructed onsite or will it arrive already constructed?
Onsite.
Onsite. Carol, I assume you've done the parking calculations on this based on the square foot that we have ample parking. We did ask the applicant to go ahead and do a zoom through where the lighting was to ensure that the lighting did stay on the premises, and you have done that. As you point out, there can require parking spaces on the new plan. No heavy drainage marked. We did discuss dressing up the building. We proposed a vinyl siding on the front of the building, correct?
Correct.
So it is a metal structure, however, it will be it will not look like a corrugated metal structure.
No.
Okay, as the picture of the completed building shows.
We discussed waste oil is going to be contained in one container right where they come pumping out?
Correct, yeah.
No bathrooms or anything, right?
No. No hydraulic activities, concrete pad, hydraulic drills. No floor like this. Yes.
So there's nothing below ground?
Nothing below ground.
Oh, no. So has anybody put those lifts in?
No.
No, not allowed. No drains in the floor, no underground, there's nothing underground.
The building really isn't going to be visible to anybody. I mean, it's about two hundred and fifty feet off the side.
Yeah, it's way back into the right line.
Yeah. And even from the back, you mentioned the church and that. It's, for whatever reason, it's at least a foot and a half below their grade.
Below grade, yeah.
Yeah, so they're not going to see much, right?
Okay, we've already thoroughly reviewed this application at the work session. Does anybody have any further questions? Is this going to be considered a temporary or permanent structure?
Permanent.
This will be permanent structure.
It meets all the wind standards, the storm standards, a hundred and twenty miles per hour.
It's on regular footing and concrete pad.
Correct.
So it'll have to be erected by local property. So it is anchored down.
Bolted.
Bolted down.
Yeah, there's a we call it a a commercial, it's a piece of steel that went all over the perimeter of it. And the shape, the shape of the building, the building sits in it. And that's way to the concrete, and then the building bolts to that. There's a picture in there.
Any other questions for Mr. Smalling? Again, just to be clear, I apologize if I came in the middle of the work session yesterday, but the siding, it's not going to be shown in the photograph for putting on dressing this up with with vinyl siding.
Correct. What's the one that you're looking at right there?
Will this increase your hours of operation?
No.
Is it the same as it is currently, which is?
Eight to five thirty, like I said.
Monday through?
Monday through five, Saturdays to two o'clock. Sundays close.
Is it automobile and trucking here?
Correct.
These photographs are typical of the building that you're purchasing. Is it going to, I mean, is it going to have it all over a garage door?
One in the front and then the one in the back.
One in the front, one in the back.
That's exactly the building, maybe what?
It is okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Very much, thank you, sir. Anyone in the audience wish to speak for against the application? If we know one coming forward, obtain motion to close the public hearing.
Salute. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. You'll be notified, sir. Next application is Kenneth Mischich. I believe I have that right. Seventy Lake Street, seek commission over retail flower, plant and flower business, subject with premises located in industrial zone, D two business zone, and C residential zone. It's a smattering of zones on one parcel of property. And we did meet with the applicant in the previous work session where we reviewed the plan. So, how are you, sir? State name and address for the record.
Ken Mischich, one oh seven Row Avenue, West Petroville.
Okay, and do you have a little green card that you could bring up?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. You want to tell us all about your rough plan?
I have some plans to open up seasonal flower selling business with live annuals, perennial hanging baskets of plants. It will go up to June thirty, the season end.
Can we get him this Tuesday weekend?
Yes, unfortunately, I didn't.
So is your plan to be open from winter?
Usually the farm's the weekend farm Sunday to June thirty.
So it's only a three-month, probably a three-month period, just this spring?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, you know, in July, always season, people go on vacation and stuff.
So the structure you're putting up, sir, is a temporary structure?
Ah, yes.
Would that come down to the other lot lots?
Yes.
So at the end of, at the end of the three-month period, the lot would be, would be returned to its state as it is now?
Yes, but I'm going to make improvements and put gravel down and stuff.
Forget that. But as it stands today, minus the improvements obviously, the tent would be removed, so there would be nothing left on the site except for the improvements you make to the lot?
Yes.
So continue on, I'm sorry. Tell us about the structure.
The structure is a whole tent, thirty by sixty. Again, it's heavily strapped down with latchet straps. Underneath that will be all benches for the shaded flowers and out front of it will be a twenty by fifty display of flowers out in the yard. And the tent itself, the owner, and it'll add a lot of color, I believe, to the area.
What would your hours of operation be, sir?
Nine to seven days.
Seven days a week, sir?
Yes.
So there's no plans to put any external lighting up?
No.
Any signage that you would put up would be subject to the the architectural review?
Yes.
Have to approve that. Was it two square meters more, around? And you saw any large sign, you know, any signs you would put up?
Okay.
A detached slot would be there, two square meters maximum.
Maximum. Sir, is this a previously existing business? Have you done this before?
As a hobby, it's my passion, you know, and this is actually a franchise business. There's a whole hundred locations. There is a website. You can see it. It is www.petrovill.com. We have the pictures and the whole business plan. They're based, I'm the first one in Long Island. We do have them in West Chester County, in upstate New York, and they originated in Pennsylvania. They have over a hundred locations.
Is this somewhat of a structured business plan that you as the franchisee have to involve?
Yes, yes.
So now all traffic would enter and exit from the Lake Street area and certainly not from the entrance on the spur?
No, 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 not there. Personally, I feel it's too close to the corner. We'll put signage up on one exit.
You obviously have to have that. Can we put up some kind of barricades between the Bargain Village Park and New York?
We discussed that.
Discuss that later, sir. Some, some
Yes, I'll put, I'll plant displays of pockets so they won't be through traffic. I could put, you know, whatever you decide. I just thought it's a rope barrier with signage on it or, you know, something more. I'd rather do displays of more danger.
So in addition to other improvements to the property?
I'm going to More detail will be grading the property level, how to put in ranges for gravel on the whole, you know, where we sell the areas and on the plans with parking areas. And that would alleviate the water drainage for drainage, you know, and also create, you know, keep the dust down and everything from the cars riding on the other ways now.
The parking plan has delineated on the aerial photograph. That, I assume that's not going to actually be?
Pre-holstered, well, no.
Is it going to be marked or?
Yeah, I'll mark it if you like.
Well, the only way to really mark it would be the installation of those bumpers, bumpers, you know. Once you place down either out of concrete or have them out of recycled, you know, rubber product, various kinds. And then people would understand that that's where they're, where they should park as opposed to hazardous parking, which is what they need to again, that's not the end of the world. Most get a hundred people which would have the same.
Right, I understand.
So there'll be no exterior lighting whatsoever? It's all a daytime daylight operation?
Daylight operation. Security inmate, if you were worried about that, is I would have wireless scanners that'll go on and motion detected and then if anybody's coming in, they'll refer it.
How is that, where are you getting the power?
No power. We already, we're going to do wireless, if I were to do transactional credit cards, I'd be doing wireless. POS system.
So you have lots of, a couple of solar panels around and backup batteries because at nighttime it's sunish, right?
Oh, no, we make them, you're right.
So for for, it's going to run off the sun?
The power of what?
Pro-circuit TV.
Oh, they're all battery up there.
Right, yes.
But they're not, you know, it's motion sensitive.
I don't know, okay, but I think what Mr. Rizzi's trying to ask is that has to be powered somehow. So will there be electric power on that site?
No, we will not have electric power.
So then how will you power these things?
Re-chargable batteries, which are during the day.
Okay.
Is there, and just sort of giggles, what if we have a dry spell? You have patches to wear outside, as?
Yeah, I'm going to bring thirty-five gallon drums. Need a hundred gallons a day on a dry spell.
So you need three?
Yeah, put them right in the
Thirty-five gallon canisters. What are they, a little better than waste tonne?
They'll be in the back of my pickup and all I have to use, grab me some water or whatever, battery up early in the morning. They're both long for a boat?
There won't be any additional?
No.
Containers strewn about the site?
No, no, it's going to be, as you see in the pictures there. And again, if you look on the website, you'll see more. It's going to be pretty organized. It's actually pretty, very complex.
So you have recycling bins, so any of the plant matter or whatever that you trimmed, etc., gets put into the recycling bins and recycled, obviously?
Yeah, that recycle, yes.
And is there going to be any paper waste?
Very small in paper waste because they come with this delivery. They come right on the house, they unload it right onto the shelving.
Okay.
And any of the plastics, that's basically what people are going to take home. You know, as far as the plants in the carrying tray.
So at night, this tent has capability of being closed off?
Yes, it has, here's, here's sides.
Yes.
And they all come down, so you can see at night. I lock it up that way.
I got you. So you can secure it from the honest people?
Yeah, they're basically from the honest people.
Okay. So we have the site plan. We went over that in the work session. Went over the barrier to stop the traffic from coming in the Lake Street entrance, or actually, yeah, I guess that's the Lake Street entrance as opposed to the Hobart Road. Well, that's the Lake Street extension down here. This, I think, is called Hobart Road, this portion, I think. So, yeah, it's Hobart Road, it says it. So Hobart Road entrance will not be available. In's and outs will be at Lake Street, which, you know, quite honestly, as we've discussed, there's a lot of traffic there, but at the same time, it's not, it's not insurmountable for people to enter and exit. We've told you, we have the felt, so it's going to be quite a big grading and a lot of improvement that's going to have to take place to this property. Okay, and any signage you know you'll have to go to the ARB? Is it permitted use in zones?
That's correct.
Okay, in the zones. All right, any other questions on board at this time? Okay, thank you. You have a seat.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak for against the application? Do you have a floor sixty-five Lake Street? Yes, sir. The question I would have on this property, it seems like we're always talking temporary structures. Why isn't anything permanent? I mean, the owner of that property, why can't he put something permanent? I don't know. You tell me.
It's economics. It has nothing to do with it.
When he comes to us with something permanent that fits the zone and is a good project, we'll certainly hear it. If you can promote that, that would be great. You know, we have two hundred and ninety-four apartments coming into the area. You can have a heavy traffic toll on Lake Street. You have an apron that needs repairing that you're pulling and out of. I don't know if you saw the property, but it's going to take a little bit of work. But now you're talking about putting stone down or RCA. And the parking, where's, I mean, you put the bumpers down. People are going to park all over the place. And the other thing is, what kind of barricades are you going to use between the Bargain Village and this? What are we putting up now? Monuments? I mean, I have to look at this, and so does my other neighbors in the neighborhood. You're talking temporary again. Why can't there be a paved parking lot? What's it going to do for a restroom? Is there going to be porta-potties there? On site? And we had the same problem last time. The fire department tries to sell flowers, you're going to infringe on them. You have a local flower shop that went out of business on Main Street, but now you have another one struggling on Lakeview Avenue. I don't think it's fair for someone who has a permanent business. Everything's temporary, you know. And the hours, once, when are they going to unload? What time are they going to unload these flowers? That's a fair question. We'll ask that. You know, I have truck trucks that come in my neighborhood at four o'clock in the morning. So are they going to add to that? Or you say there's no lighting? Come on. In my neighborhood, you better have lighting. At the bottom of the list, you're going to have a lot of problems on that corner. You just had a major accident there. I'm sure you know the area. We have a lot of accidents there. It's a blind spot coming around that bend. And I don't care what you do, they're going to cut through the Bargain Village parking lot. There's going to be a lot of problems on that corner. And you have a driveway right there where there's like two apartment complexes, actually, three apartment complexes where they have to try to come out, go two homes and one apartment complex where they have to come out on the Lake Street. Plus, you have an area where they yield from where you go on. I mean, you know, let's, just think about the area. Just think about the traffic, the flow. You can have two hundred and ninety-four apartments on top of what you already have, traffic coming to the village. I just think it's not a great idea to put something temporary there. And re-grade the property, pave it, do what you have to do to, you know, go with the flow of property, the traffic and do the right thing. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for against the application? State your name and address for the record. Close the volume on.
Good evening. My name's Madeline Pint, and I live at nine Lake Court, which is also the Union, which comes right onto Lake Street. Couple of houses down from the proposed flower operation.
Yeah.
And I'm just opposed to it because there's already way too much traffic coming in and out. I can't get out of Lake Court oftentimes because of the additional flow of all the buildings going on and construction. There's a huge gully from the Union onto Lake Street that you have to really go like two miles per hour just to get in and out. Otherwise, you bottom out. So that in addition with all the extra traffic, there was a major accident that I had to re-rap myself around last week. Two cars and there was, you know, because they come around that bend really quick and to get onto that Lake Street spur is, it's dangerous right there. It's a dangerous corner. There's too much going on for another business right there. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for against the application?
Sir, my name is Pete Berman. Born in Petroville. They have the old Petroville Community Hospital.
Yes, sir.
So I've been around the block a little bit, but I just want to speak in favor. I'd rather look at a nice flower stand and a vacant lot. And this fellow happens to be the lieutenant on the city fire department. He speaks world with his character. So that's just what I want to say.
Thank you, sir. Truck here, engine?
Definitely.
Anyone else wish to speak for, I guess? Okay, thank you. If anyone else coming forward this time, obtain a motion to close the public hearing?
Salute.
Motion by Mr. Rizzi, seconded by Mr. Murphy, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so carried. You'll be notified. Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. Application is that of Zayden Investments, one seventy-six West Main Street, commission over drug stores, subject premises located in the D two business zone. Good evening, sir. Could you state your name and address for the record? Bring these reading slips up to Carol and get a lot more.
Thomas Diaz, fifteen hours road, Saint James Road.
Thank you. So guys, also about your application?
My plan is for change of use. It was a deep as quality, a big supply store there for many years. About seventeen hundred square feet store. And I wish to build a drug store there. Four years ago, in two thousand and eight, this was already approved for a larger, much larger drug store, seven thousand. We had to postpone that because of the economy and banks and everything. So we had to postpone the project. Now we're going to re-emerge again in project, but in a much smaller. The plans in two thousand and eight to go will take up warehouse space and convert it to retail. We're not going to that. We're just taking the existing piece of supply store and converting it to one.
Okay, so I did get the opportunity to go down and look at the property. And unlike your neighbor, your property is spotless and very good shape there. You have, do have ample parking in the back. The body shop is off the boat back there. Must have about twenty-five yards stacked. Yeah. But at any rate, it looks like you have ample parking and ample ability for people to walk around, certainly to go to the store. How many employees will the business?
About six, about six employees.
About two at a time? Is that the goal, have two people on?
No, that's probably the between four and six at any time in the store. Four and six employees.
Okay. Should we be parking in the rear of the van?
We have sixteen spaces in the rear. Dead end location on that street back there. There is parking. And we intend to park, the employees intend to park in the county parking, which is across the street.
We anticipate hours of the pharmacy?
Certainly nine thirty-eight, Monday through Friday, nine to seven on Saturdays and nine to six, or nine thirty actually, to six on Sundays.
Mr. Diaz, would you touch upon the logistics of accepting freight or shipping out or the nature?
We have a door in the back.
All deliveries will be?
The back door. There's a back door. That building is built for that. It was used like that many years. There's a, there's a lot of space in the back for freight. We're lucky that we have that roll in the back, dead end roll in the back there. It's not used. It's not used now.
Sir, this is not a, this is not a chain or franchise drug store. This is a
No, it's an independent community pharmacy.
I have a question.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I think it's a good thing. People, people need to have an option.
These are local people that are actually the ones, so
Yeah.
So this will bring six jobs to our village town?
Yeah.
We've gone over the analysis, you know, the parking. We did, and it should be noted for the record that we did review this application in depth at our work session last week.
The first one, is there, is there basement?
No, no basement.
No basement, and I'll assume, and I believe it's such a plan that they will not be storing the hazardous
No, no.
Mostly hazardous chemicals?
No, no, just pharmaceuticals. We let storage, and there is a storage, the program next door is a warehouse, and we're going to use that for storage.
Nothing volatile, though?
No. Just medicinal purposes, you know, just the regular chemicals.
A great one to offer.
Use.
A great one.
We're going to, we're going to do deliveries to the local, to the town. We're gonna, we're gonna do deliveries to the local, to the town. And we, we plan to do a lot of deliveries at the time, work with the local hospital, uh, to service some of their patients.
Be a nice service. I think it does, uh, I don't think, uh, the chains offer home deliveries.
No, no.
They do not.
We're also gonna do compounding.
I was just gonna ask, is it more of a dispensary or a compounding operator?
We're mentioning more, we're also gonna do a compounding where we do, you know, creams and ointments and things, uh, specific for the individual. And sometimes veterinarians use that to, depending on the weight of the animal.
It's somewhat difficult sometimes to get certain pharmaceuticals because not that many places do compounding anymore. It's more of a dispensary than anything else.
That's correct. So we have to, we have to fill in that gap.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's excellent. That's, that's a welcome service. I know a couple of times I had to get a couple of things that had to be compounded, and I had to go all the way to save it.
Yes.
For the Rexel store.
It's absolutely-
They're gone now.
Mostly about the independent stores that fit the company.
So this fills a gap very nicely.
Can you speak, uh, for a moment about, uh, security and the-
Cameras and, you know, we have a wrong system.
Standard.
Uh, yeah, yeah, we, we don't anticipate any trouble, but we keep bringing a security guard at knee deep. Um, I, I think it's a very busy area. A lot of traffic is light in the-
Visibility, high visibility?
I think we're gonna be safe.
Mm-hmm.
I would hope so.
Imagine-
And there's a lot of windows all, all around the-
Right, yeah. That's what I was referring to.
So there, there's our, you know.
Imagine this is a stupid question, but I'll ask it anyway because we've had this with other pharmacies. There's no plans for a drive-in?
No.
Dispensary of any sort?
No.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak for against the application? I think we've pretty much heard this one all the way through. I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, how do we approve this application, uh, subject to the approval of the, uh, architecture review board for any proposed signage and more exterior improvements to the building? Uh, and again, as stipulated in the, um, applicant's, uh, testimonial, delivery shall be in the rear of the building.
Motion by Mr. Weeks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rizzi, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Congratulations, welcome to the village, Patrick. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Take the kids.
Take your kids.
Bring the girls. Next on our dead of the seating is James Banana, one, one fourteen West Main Street, seat commission, this is for the outdoor patio with seating for dining. Subject premises located in D2 Business Zone. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So if you would be so kind as to create green cards to Carol, and before you speak, if you're involved in the street, please both state your name and address for the record. Let the record also show that we met with these two gentlemen at our work session last week where we, where we reviewed the application in depth. Good evening.
Good evening. James Banana.
David Johnson.
Address?
Uh, one fourteen West Main Street.
Let's look at Jones.
Okay, um-
It's been a long time. Very long. Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry. One fourteen West Main Street, the taproom, um, application for outdoor cafe adjacent to the building on the west side, between the building one fourteen and the Suffolk County Courthouse. Uh, looking to an outdoor seating there, serve food, um, with food coming through the dining room. They're being closed without pavers on RCA with planter boxes and benches going around, um, with fireworks, like I said, the dining entrance would be through the car dining room at the taproom.
Okay, and so you're gonna be doing this actually on the county's property?
Correct.
And you have at least time on your subject towards property?
Right.
Do we, do we have a copy or have we seen a copy of this lease, Carol, or can we get a copy of it, too?
I don't believe we have one.
Yeah, we should have a copy of that at least on file, if you get the grant for this.
Okay.
Just so that we have it.
Okay.
Now, in our discussions in the work session, we went over the fact that it's not going to be outdoor music. I, you, refresh me on that.
Yeah, we said we're gonna do live music.
No live music outdoors. It's for dining.
It's for dining. Uh, we could, with permission, like, put outdoor speakers, keep the volume, you know, relatively low at a, you know, adequate, um, dining level. But not, you know, rock, you know, not bands or, you know, anything like that.
And, and after a certain DB, you, you require a special permit from the village board, which would not be purview of this board, but you have to make a separate, uh, application to them.
Right.
So I think all music, in respect of all music, I think is, is an okay thing. Like, if you go past a certain DB level, these guys would need us out there to-
Right, yeah, standards, sure.
Right. Oh, counsel. Good evening.
I was gonna ask about fireworks, but I'm reading here fireworks are on the southeast corner of the patio.
Yeah, actually, originally, there's, um, some shrubbery along the building there.
Right.
And I assume that the building, like, keep that shrubbery there. Um, so looking at the exit, uh, if it stays on the southeast side, it wouldn't make sense, 'cause the exit would be coming into a bush.
Right.
Um, so I think it would be better moved to the southwest side of it, just so for, um, aesthetics, the shrubbery would stay on the side of the building there.
So then we'll change this to the southwest corner?
Right. Just 'cause the bush is there.
Okay.
And so the actual enclosure is going to be made by these flower boxes or, or the actual, so talk to us about the actual enclosure. How is that actually-
Sure, we put, um, the county, they, um, liked similar to what Parable has on the sidewalk right now. They have planter boxes with the stanchions with their logo.
Right.
Um, they had said that we'd like it to look, you know, nice like that, like that Parab, uh, Parable was. Um, so same type of look with the planter box, um, and then the stanchion in between, then the planter box. So that'd be the view from the outside, where you'd see the planter box, um, with little hedge on top, and the landscapes coming out on the outside to make a nice, you know, shrubbery of flowers around. But then on the inside of that planter box, there'd be a bench, um, so there'd be some seating around the perimeter, you know, of the, of the space.
Now, by virtue of your storing the sliding glass door, you want to reduce your seating level inside the restaurant?
Yeah, we're gonna remove quite a, almost half our dining room inside, um, which is not too big to deal with.
Right.
But yeah, we're moving fully punch tables just for the nature of the best of half of the, the, um, doors.
Okay. Yeah, I assume that obviously operations, because their doors in, in winter time, you'll be able to regain those tables.
Right.
Close down the outside.
Yeah, right, we're gonna close the outside, bring those tables back in.
And of course, your, your final calculation of occupancy is subject to the fire marshal, or chief building inspector.
Right.
They will set your occupancy.
They, they, you know, putting a lot of people out there isn't really there, you know, with the tables there. Um, so, it's-
So, so there are no plans to remove any of the existing landscaping that's outside that? One of those trees is quite large right there. You're gonna sort of work around that?
That tree we're gonna leave, there are some shrubs.
Right, that'll probably-
Right along, um, the property right now, like, right, actually, right in front of where the sliding glass door is, which, those few shrubs that have to be removed. But then towards the back of the building, there's shrubbery between, like, the key, that's what we're saying, you would be tired of the shrubbery, and then keeping that tree.
Does, uh, does your lease, um, state what months this can be in operation?
No.
Doesn't, so it's a twelve-month lease?
Right.
Essentially, if you wanted to go out there and have a pole there closed, you could do it.
So you have the ice plunge at the party.
And, and, and I do notice that this is not on the sidewalk, this is set back sixteen feet from the sidewalk.
No.
Okay, which is probably even, probably in front of the, well, actually, it's probably backwards from the front of the store, 'cause the store is wide, maybe, at the, uh, front of the restaurants, maybe about ten feet off the-
The front of the restaurant, right up to the sidewalk.
Is it up to the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay, there's sixteen off the sidewalk.
So you're actually going, setting back, okay.
Right.
And was that, was that your choice, or was that the county's choice?
They gave us twenty feet. Um, some of the exact footage from the door to the sidewalk, but it's well over twenty feet.
Okay.
So it couldn't, you know, unless they gave us more footage, it couldn't go to the sidewalk, 'cause it had to be in front of the door.
Right, right. So, 'cause the only place you could logically put a safer glass door would be-
Hit back and back.
Where it is, so you have to be able, so you have thirty-five feet back from that, I see.
Right.
Now, you'll have to return this back to its normal landscape when you're done with this area, so whatever dispensers you're putting up, this, this boundary, is that something that'll come down in the fall, or will that remain up?
No, that'll remain.
That'll remain?
Right.
And, and if I was to stand there and look at this, I, I see you've got the flower boxes and then maybe about three feet high?
Yeah, the boxes maybe is, like, maybe up to here.
And then how high would these, if I was standing on the street, could I see in?
Yeah, you'd be able to see in. Um, we're thinking having a hedge maybe like up to here.
Okay.
Eighteen or sixteen.
But it wouldn't be the kind of thing that a person could hop over very easily?
No, and that's, I mean, besides aesthetics.
Or, or I shouldn't, I shouldn't re-
And that's why we want, we don't want, we don't want that. We'd like, you know, the hedge to be high enough so you can't get over it.
I'd be more concerned with people falling in, but that's another story, the way things been going lately.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Yeah, we, we want the entrance to come through, through the restaurant.
Right, so typically patrons will enter the restaurant through the normal entrance. They'll be asked if they wanna dine inside or outside. If they wanna go outside, they'll be escorted out through the,
The location.
The sliding doors, and the only access from the outside is the emergency exit. You will not be permitted to come in through-
Right, yeah, no, no, no one coming in.
On the southwest corner.
And no one leaving, no one going out either, having an emergency.
Emergency, exactly.
Will the hours of the outdoor dining patio be any different from the hours of the restaurant itself? Would it be the same?
Um, yeah, I mean, we'd like to, we do keep our kitchen open late. I think we're one of the later spots in Petro that does do dining late. Um, as a result of that, we have a lot of, um, industry workers who get off of their shifts at, you know, eleven, eleven-thirty, wanna get a bite deep, and they come to us. Um, and a lot of the restaurants, the warehouse, Parabel, staff, barbecue, even for accounts when they close. Um, so we do get a kind of, a lot of late night dining, like during the week, we keep our kitchen open till one. Um, so I guess in the summertime, um, as, I guess more people are out during the week, and it's lighter out, and then just later in the summer as opposed to winter. Um, you know, I guess with permission, we'd like to keep it open till one, so those people getting off work, you know, to come have a bite deep, if it's nice out, you know, to enjoy the outdoors.
So the hours, the hours would be basically the same as what the restaurant hours are inside. You would close this down prior to closing the restaurant?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
How about lighting?
We have, um, regooshneck light, uh, lighting coming off the, um, building on one fourteen.
Right.
And then, um, rope lighting underneath the benches on the perimeter. And then, one thing we want to do, we didn't know, get the county or really want us to do, but we think it might look nice, is on the corners, on the west side, so as far as the way from the building, is putting like, like a seven or eight-foot European-looking, like lantern, uh, like a-
Could you spike that sheet to the building apartment on that?
Mm-hmm.
So we see what you're talking about?
Sure.
Any other questions, right?
Uh, clearly there's, uh, some great space for advertising on here, but I'm going to assume that, uh, since you're, it's gonna be restricted signage there, it's gonna be restricted to, uh, a review by our potential review board.
Right.
I'm not gonna see like-
Like the car wash?
Tufers, uh, you know, sign out, uh, you know, temporary signs or-
We'd like to make it look as, you know, nice and classy as possible with just the, just the planter boxes, 'cause, you know, our stanchions, um, is what the county asks for, just the stanchions going around.
Right, so there'll be no temporary advertising type of-
Yeah, no, no plan of saying, whatever it is, tufers on Tuesdays, whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Anyone in the audience wish to speak for against the application? Mr. Bojack, gentlemen, you can have a seat.
John Bojack, they're not supposed to be on last, because I wasn't expecting to speak on, on this subject. I'm certainly in favor of this proposal, uh, without a doubt, but I want to, uh, ask a question. Can you stipulate as a planning board that these planting boxes be cared for and, uh, be kept clean, issues of that nature?
Absolutely.
All right, I suggest you do some, I'll tell you why. Uh, amongst the volunteer jobs I perform for the village is I take care of the village's planters on Main Street and different streets of the village. I've been doing that, look, last year. It's a very humble job, means I have to take care of plants when they've been pulled down from planters, and clean up the planters when they have been dirty. It turns out that the taproom area is one of the worst areas for vandalism that the village experiences. Now, I'm not around at night to know exactly what's going on, but the owner of Quench, whose plants that he has in front of his store, feels that this is mostly due to the patrons of the taproom being inebriated, coming out and vandalizing things. I have tried to speak to the owners via staff that I see during the day, to communicate to the owners that this has been going on outside their establishment for some time. Frankly, I can't see how any of the owners could have never seen any of this, because those are the dirtiest planters in all of Petro Village, is right in front of the taproom. And that's based on my four or five months of looking at all the planters in the village. So, I'm glad they wanna have planters, it's a great idea, it beautifies everything. They should make, and I'm sure they'll make an effort to keep those clean, but I would certainly ask them to also look at the rest of the building, and try to help the village keep the planters that we have there clean as well. Maybe again, coincidence of interest, they can beautify their business and beautify the village at the same time, and ask their patrons to pay some attention to the rest of the village on their way out.
Thank you, Mr. Bojack. It's good information. Anyone else wish to speak for against the application? Okay, now I'm entertaining motion, close the public hearing. Motion by Mr. Rizzi.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Murphy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry. Okay, gentlemen, you'll be notified. Just a little housekeeping, we're going to, uh, Jerran Dublin Deck, through twenty-seven River Avenue. Just for the public's notification, we are waiting a report from sound engineer. We still have a lighting plan that we are due to look at, and we, uh, also need to, uh, review in depth the site plan for parking and, and, uh, proposed uses, et cetera. So there's still some more work to be done on that application, and that will be, uh, re-advertised before it's reheared, just so you know, 'cause it's been quite a while now.
So to be clear, Mr. Chairman, 'cause I was gonna request that, that, uh, in, in a timely enough matter, one, once we know that this application is actually gonna be heard, it will be re-advertized?
Yes.
Because otherwise, I'd suggest that it at some point be denied, and then brought up again so we can re-advertize it.
We did, Mr. Weeks, just for your knowledge, uh, myself and Mr. Rizzi met with, uh, with, uh, and, and, and Ms. Jillio also met with, uh, engineers that, uh, this board has, uh, procured to renew the, uh, or to go through the, uh, sound wall, proposed sound wall. Uh, we met with them sometime, well, within the last two weeks. It was that very cold day, we were down there freezing to death, and we actually got a tour of the place and, and went through it. Um, and, um, 'cause I had never been inside of it before. And at any rate, uh, he's going to come back to us with some specific information, proposals. Um, and, and we probably will see that, I would say, during the month of April. And additionally, you know, uh, we will have to sit down, and review, a couple of us without a form, have to sit down and really look at that, the site plan that they've given to us, or maybe they're gonna give us an alternate site plan. I know counsel's in, in touch with, uh, with their counsel, uh, to hone a site plan that has proper parking on it. Um, and then additionally, one of the other pieces of input that we got from the public was, uh, lighting. Um, and we are awaiting a, a lighting plan on that, and then we'll see if we need anything else once we've got those things together. Um, after we've put together that information, we'll, uh, rehear it and see, uh, what else the public has to say. And, you know, perhaps we'll be in a position at that point in time to render the decision. And, you know, perhaps we'll be in a position at that point in time to render the decision.
I just think it would be, uh, there's been enough delay of, of this application and the, the initial interest in the application, that it would be prudent, I think, of us to, to make sure it's properly re-advertized.
Yeah, and, and we will not hear it unless it is re-advertized, because it's been too long.
Mr. Chairman, we've been, uh, in touch with the council, and they're aware of it, as well as the, the roof's a little doormat.
Yeah. Okay, so when we're ready to hear them, because right now, until we get some information, we're not ready to hear it yet. Uh, at that point in time, we'll, uh, send it out, re, make sure it's reposted and, and whoever is interested can come down and, uh, certainly help us out. So, at this point in time, I will ask to continue the adjournment of, uh, Dublin Deck, three twenty-seven River Avenue.
All right.
Motion by Mr. Weeks. Second?
Second.
By Mr. Felice Olazan, favor?
Aye.
Repost, it's okay. Okay, so, last on our agenda to be heard tonight, and this is for a, a sounding essentially for the village board, um, DNF Patchogue AL LLC. Um, I have a whole bunch of addresses, basically eighteen Maple Avenue, twenty-two Maple Avenue, one thirty-one East Main Street. Uh, scene site plan review, senior assisted living facility, a referral to the Board of Trustees for zoning change. Uh, subject premises located D-two Business Zone, D-three Business Zone. To, uh, help those of the audience who are not associated with the application, which there are not many people, but, but for those who are here, that is the lot down next to the, uh, I guess it's the Row Agency, next to, uh, the printing place, and there's a lot right there at Maple Avenue, Main Street. You know what I'm talking about, right, you two guys? Because you're the only two not associated with the application. Um, so that's the lot we're talking about, and that goes way back. That's where this is. And so, yes, Mr. Weeks?
I know you said this, Mr. Chairman, but I, I know I chaired one of these hearings and it was so confusing, and just to be, not to be redundant, but to be clear, this is, um, a process that doesn't happen a lot often. We are, we are merely here to, uh, listen to the facts and hear this application, and then we're, we're charged with writing a letter of reference to the village board, which is the only body that has the power to grant changes of zone. If that were to occur at some point, then the applicant would come back to this board for a full, uh, site plan review.
That's correct. Absolutely correct, Mr. Weeks. So, we have listened and, and have met with this application on probably three or four occasions. Well, probably over the course of a couple of years, it's probably-
Oh, that's true.
Five or six times on this particular project, uh, in one form or another, and I think this, well, this would be the second public hearing we've actually had on this, but, but this application is the first, and certainly we're interested in anything the public has to say. Uh, matter of fact, what you, you might want to do, because I don't know if the public has actually been able to see it, counsel, before you begin, maybe just take that easel and turn it around for, um, and smile to the camera, I guess. And then, uh, I imagine you did have to do the mailing, so if you did the mailing, you have the green cards that you can give to, uh, Carol and Jillio here. And, um, then, of course, take your name and address for the record, and tell us all about the project. And we should note for the record that, again, we have met previously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is William Venesso. I'm a partner with the law firm of Frichelli, Kurtor, Deegan, Schwartz, Minio, and Turana. Three thirty-three Row Overington Boulevard, Uniondale, New York. Here on behalf of the applicant, DNF Patchogue AL LLC. I do have the green mailing cards. I'll provide those to you, as Jillio.
Mr. Chairman, as you and Mr. Weeks pointed out, we are here this evening for the purpose of presenting this application to the planning board because we have filed an application, a petition for a rezoning of the subject property, and prior to going to the Board of Trustees directly, this board reviews the application and makes a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. We are asking that the board make that, uh, that recommendation as a result of the application and the, and the information we've provided. Um, again, the applicant, uh, DNF Patchogue AL LLC, is contract vendee of the three parcels of property that the chairman referenced, one thirty-one East Main Street, twenty-two Maple Avenue, and eighteen Maple Avenue. Uh, those three parcels, um, comprise basically in a regularly shaped, uh, parcel of property containing about fifty-eight thousand, uh, square feet, or one and, one and a third acres. Uh, the premises maintains frontage on East Main Street of a hundred and ten feet, frontage on the west side of Maple Avenue of a hundred and seventeen point eight feet, and the property is zoned, uh, D-three and D-two business districts. And it's, and the surrounding area is developed with a mix of commercial, residential, and municipal uses. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to the H Business District in order to construct and operate a senior assisted living facility at the premises. Uh, as the board well knows, Long Island's population is, uh, aging, and the demand for senior housing and senior assisted living facilities is outpacing the supply of such facilities. Uh, the proposed facility will provide those services, uh, needed by the residents of Patchogue who want to provide their elderly relatives with superior health and living care while keeping them close by so that they can still be involved in the lives of their family. The proposed, uh, development of this particular site in the downtown area will provide a sense of vibrancy for the facility residents. The residents will, uh, be able to still be a part of the community, uh, by those, uh, who are able to, uh, walk to shops and, uh, other stores in the area. It'll, it'll allow them to do so, and the residents, uh, uh, of the community, of residents of the facility will be benefited, as will the businesses who they, uh, who they visit. Uh, as indicated, we're seeking a rezoning to the B- Business H District to construct a new building. The building area of the proposed building will be twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet as, as currently proposed, and the total floor area of the proposed building will be eighty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-eight square feet. The building is proposed to have a basement reach a maximum, uh, number of, uh, stories of five stories. It will be somewhat cantilevered. The front of the, of the building fronting on East Main will be three stories, and then as it moves, uh, to the, uh, moves back, it will rise to five stories with a maximum height of fifty-nine feet five inches. Uh, access to the premises will be from, uh, East Main Street, which will be a one-way entrance in, and also from Maple Street, which will provide two-way access, uh, to and from the property. As, uh, as presently proposed, the engineered site plan that we've submitted, uh, will provide sixty-three parking spaces as well as, uh, four land bank parking spaces, uh, if additional parking is required. That will include three handicap spaces and an ambulance space, and then there will also be a loading space, uh, so consequently, a total with the land bank parking and the loading of sixty-eight spaces. The majority of the parking spaces are proposed to be nine feet by nineteen, not nine feet wide by nineteen feet deep, uh, and approximately nineteen of the parking spaces are proposed to be nine feet wide by eighteen feet deep. The facility itself would provide, uh, a total of a hundred and twenty-eight residential units and one hundred and forty-five beds. The facility will offer assisted living and assisted living services for the memory impaired. The operator, the operator will provide service-enhanced senior housing, which includes assistance with bathing, dressing, grooming, medication management, and nutritional counseling services. The facility will also provide dining, housekeeping, transportation, and laundry services in addition to social and recreational activities. Uh, in addition to the rezoning that we will require, and as pointed out, we will have to come back to this board thereafter for site plan approval, the proposed development will also require, uh, certain variances. Uh, we will need certain, uh, setback variances, height variances, because we exceed the three-story limit and the thirty-five foot height limit. Uh, we will also require a, uh, building area variance, and we will require parking variance based upon the fact that the res, the, um, nursing home requirement that, um, we're applying to this development at one space per every two beds requires seventy-three spaces, and we're providing the sixty-eight spaces. And then we are also, we would also need, in the, in the way of parking, uh, variance, we would also need variances to permit the stalls that are not as deep as required, this at nineteen, eighteen feet. Uh, we are proposing a ten-foot landscape buffer along the Northerly property line adjacent to the residential property. Um, when I bring up our site engineer, uh, or, uh, the representative from a site engineering firm, Sharon Norman, remember, she'll get into the actual site development. Before I do that, though, I would like to first call up Mr. Joseph, uh, Brusella. Mr. Brusella is the Senior Vice President, uh, Senior Director of Operations Management for Life Care Services. Uh, it is the entity that is going to operate the facility, and I know you heard Mr. Brusella last week, but I'd like, for the purposes of creating the record, I'd like Mr. Brusella to go over, again, the, uh, the operation of the facility and then address some of the specific issues that, uh, that the board had raised.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to address you. Uh, when I had a chance to talk to you last week, uh, there was a request for, uh, listing of communities, uh, that our company has been associated with, and, uh, some information about our company, so I provided, uh, this, uh, for you.
So why don't you first, um, start with an overview of the financial services to be provided and envisioned at this site?
Sure. I, um, I want to be super dudny, because Mr. Venasso did a very good job of, uh, summarizing it. Uh, the, uh, the applicant is, uh, uh, proposing a, again, a hundred and twenty-eight unit, uh, assisted living community. Forty-four of those, uh, units, uh, we anticipate will be, uh, dedicated for, uh, what we call memory care, licensed for memory care, uh, the balance of, for, uh, uh, enriched housing. And, um, uh, this will also, uh, have the ability for, uh, seventeen of those units to accommodate, uh, double occupancy. So whether that be a, uh, man and wife, or brother and sister, or frankly, two strangers that want to, uh, uh, share in that, that ability is, uh, is there. Um, again, the community will, uh, provide, uh, housekeeping, maintenance, laundry services, uh, on a daily basis for, uh, for individuals. Uh, planned and specialized activities, uh, based on their specific, uh, needs. Uh, there'll be a, uh, specific, uh, food service and nutritional planning, uh, program in place. Uh, transportation, uh, to, um, um, events around, uh, uh, the town, uh, to, uh, doctors' visits, appointments such as, such as that. Uh, in general, social activities, uh, within the community. Specific to memory care, there are, uh, specialized, uh, uh, activity programs, uh, that are put together in a care plan for each individual, depending on what the level of dementia or level of, uh, of need that, uh, they have. Um, the typical, um, individual that, uh, will live in this community will be a, um, a widow. Uh, most likely, the median age, uh, the first generation would be, probably about eighty-two to eighty-three years, uh, of age. Um, uh, did a little research since the last meeting, uh, approximately twelve and a half percent of all people who live in assisted living facilities are married. Uh, and a very small percentage of that twelve and a half percent, uh, the, uh, the, what I call the well spouse, uh, joins them. In fact, particularly in memory care, uh, oftentimes it's the, uh, uh, called the well spouse, which is the caregiver in the home who, uh, actually expires first as a result of the distress and pressure of taking care of that, uh, that landlord.
That's a sad, uh, sad reality.
That is a, a strong reality in the, uh, the business that we have. There'd be, uh, approximately sixty to seventy, uh, full-time equivalents, uh, working, uh, at the community throughout, uh, the week. Uh, it is a twenty-four-seven operation. There will always be, uh, people, uh, at the community. The, uh, time of day and week will probably at its height, uh, would be, uh, mid-afternoons on weekdays. Uh, we've actually had even some debates since then about, uh, how best to stagger ships to even, uh, spread that out a little further. But we would expect with ships going on and off at the same time, a maximum number of people on the premises at any time, uh, employees on premises at any time, it's probably about thirty, uh, in a period. So I would, I would say, uh, uh, five to six leaving the premises at the time that's, uh, that's going on. Um, somebody had asked about, uh, rates. Uh, we'd expect the basic rate to be, uh, um, somewhere on the average about four thousand dollars a month, and then there are care-level packages that are, uh, that are purchased depending on, uh, what, uh, when, what individuals' needs are. Typically, those are, uh, three different levels, uh, anywhere from maybe another four hundred to another twelve hundred dollars, uh, a month. Memory care is closer to five thousand as a basic rate.
Talk to us about, if you will, um, security at the facility, um, for both, both for people on the outside and people on the inside.
Sure. Um, well, as I mentioned earlier, the, uh, community, uh, will, uh, be staffed on a twenty-four-seven basis, so there will always be, um, trained staff on site, uh, at all times. Um, all staff, uh, is trained in, um, um, in accident prevention and, uh, safety. In fact, uh, our company has a very formal risk management, uh, program, both for employee safety, for resident's safety, uh, that, uh, all employees, uh, must pass, uh, to continue to work, uh, at the community. Uh, we, uh, expect for security reasons that, uh, with, uh, very few exceptions, uh, uh, entry into the building will be through, uh, the front entrance, uh, that that entrance would be, uh, uh, would be open during what we would call daylight hours, uh, business hours, uh, with a, uh, staffed front, uh, front desk. Uh, during, uh, those non, uh, business hours, uh, it may still be, uh, staffed with, uh, security, uh, and that front door and other doors would be locked at that, uh, period of time. And we would expect security cameras, uh, at, at specific points. I can't tell you those specific points today because frankly, the architect and I haven't even had a chance to talk about it.
And, um, in terms of securing the building for, for the residents, uh, particularly the memory impaired residents, I think you told me that the elevators are key-coded so that a, a patient who is ambulatory and, but nevertheless has, uh, dementia issues can't get on the elevator and go down. If you could just elaborate on that.
A very significant issue, uh, over the history of, uh, particularly the, the history of nursing homes in the past was, uh, the problem of what we call elopement, which is basically people escaping from, uh, from the community. Uh, while we, uh, we cannot believe in restraint by medication, uh, so, uh, those, uh, memory care units, in fact, will be secured. Uh, you may only enter or leave, uh, by code, uh, by code into, uh, into a locked entry. The elevators themselves will have, uh, uh, code access, uh, on the, uh, fourth and fifth floor only where those, uh, areas would be. And, um, it is, um, fair, a fairly, uh, efficient way of, uh, of assuring that, uh, we minimize the chance of elopement in it.
You mentioned that the, the staff goes through training, uh, with regard to accident care. Are they also trained and, and drilled, if you will, in emergency evacuation of, of residents and the like?
Yes, I mean, we're required anyway to do that, but, uh, beyond, uh, beyond that, uh, in terms of, uh, their training and how to respond in fire emergencies and, uh, general emergencies within, uh, in the building, whether it be bomb threat or, or any, any other possibility, and there is, uh, a, uh, there, there will be, uh, put together and will provide it for the, uh, for the applicant, a, uh, a general, uh, what we call emergency and disaster plan, uh, for both the site, people on site, uh, to be trained at, and, uh, there are constant drills, um, that take place in that area.
And, um, deliveries, can you speak to that, truck traffic? What can, how, practically how many deliveries?
Did a little more research on that also, and I, I was fairly right the, the last time we talked. We would, uh, we would expect that, uh, there'd be, uh, uh, you know, on average, you know, one to two truck deliveries, uh, per weekday. truck deliveries per weekday at the community. We would find it to be relatively rare that it would be on a weekend. And again, I shared with this group that we have the ability to ask our major suppliers to provide delivery in what we call smaller trucks than they might have normally provided.
And in terms of laundry, you would be doing that on-site, whether it be, whether it be laundry service for those who either don't want to or can't take care of their own laundry, or the residents would be using provided washers and dryers, is that correct?
That, that is correct. It was our understanding that rather than having the laundry subcontracted out, that in fact, we would provide that in-house. All linens and dining linens, bed linens will be done by the community. That will be part of the basic package that a person has. Their, their personal laundry is a, is a decision by the families whether they either wish to do that themselves, have us do that for them. Or frankly, there are occasions where the residents, I mean, assisted living part would do that themselves, have the ability to do that.
And lastly, the impact, if any, that you would expect there to be of upon emergency, emergency vehicles in the area for the residents?
Do use of emergency vehicles.
Right.
Again, our, our experience has been that at the end of the day, there has not been a significant difference in having a community like this in a small community that has volunteer ambulance service. And we believe that it's due to three factors. One, that is that many of the people that will be in this community are already in your general community and will be probably needing the use of emergency medical services more so than, more so now than when they are in a community where there's supervision. Secondly, we will have, as I said, constant supervision at the community. So in the vast majority of cases, when a person has or perceives that there's an emergency, there is an immediate response by the in-house staff, and they can assess the circumstance at that time and any times allay the need for even calling nine-one-one in that case. And frankly, again, those cases where the ambulance is called, they can be reasonably assured that they will already know what the situation is that they are going to have to deal with prior to entering the building, which we feel is both inefficient and any, I can't remember where I words at again today. It's a better way of handling a situation for them to be prepared for that. So, but again, historically, it has not been a significant impact. And I think I also shared, there may be a week or two out there in any year that, you know, all kinds of wrong things are happening, but on a day-in, day-out, a year-in, year-out basis, we, we don't see it as being significant.
Will there be medically licensed staff on hand at any time or at all time, nurses, for instance?
There will be, there'll be a registered nurse on the premises, but not twenty, not necessarily twenty-four hours a day. There will be the equivalent of an ARAD or an LPAD on, on staff at the community twenty-four hours, seven days a week at all times.
Could you, could you just give us the differentiators between your community and our nursing home, just for the record?
Well, nursing homes, we call a skilled nursing facility.
Skilled nursing facility.
Is, best way to describe it, a skilled nursing facility is providing a level of care which must be, in fact, supervised by a registered nurse. And that's sort of the least common denominator in all of that. So there would not be skilled care under the definition of the state of New York and federal government.
So we're not going to find people who are not ambulatory, we're not going to find people who are in traction, we're not going to find people who are sick.
Right. Well, you will find people who are...
Well, I mean, obviously, we're going to find people who have conditions, diabetes, et cetera.
Right.
You know, all the things that come wonderfully with age. Obviously, that's why they're in the facility, because they no longer really care for themselves, per se, but not to the level where they need constant care.
Right. Maybe another thing about health...
That's the differentiator.
Right. Another thing might help is that a community like this is not eligible to receive Medicare funding, and the reason for that is only skilled nursing conditions can, can be covered in, under Medicare. And, you know, that would be rehabilitated care, so if you break your hip and need to recuperate to the point where you can't ambulate again, you would not return until you could ambulate.
And yet, it wouldn't be unheard of for you to have OT, occupational therapist, a physical therapist, speech therapist, et cetera, coming to the building based on a person's needs.
Absolutely.
They obviously don't need to be post-rehab, for example.
Actually, it's on a preventive plan as opposed to a rehabilitated plan. And that's probably the, the two words that differentiate the best.
Gentlemen, is there, is there a minimum requirement? Because what I'm reading here is that, you know, the requirement that I would have to be a resident there with one or two cars, that I might have is to be sixty-five years old.
You, you do need to have a demonstrated need for a minimum of three, what they call activities of daily living. So, and that can be as simple as...
What if I was a housekeeper and I wasn't doing laundry?
Yeah, I, you know, actually, yeah, I might qualify for that because I'm not very good at doing my laundry or doing my housekeeping, but, but, you know, seriousness, the, you know, activity of daily living, such as assistance with bathing, assistance with dressing, persons no longer able to do routine housekeeping within their single-family home, but those are all examples of, of activities of daily living.
Those are, what I'm really getting at is, are these people, and clearly the architect is an issue in my concern, when you're, you're going for a nursing home parking designation, but it's not a nursing home? I, I want to, I want some information to indicate that the bulk of, or at least a significant portion of your residents are just not sixty-five years old and able to drive and don't want to bother doing... What would keep me from, from becoming a resident if I was sixty-five?
Nothing would keep you from doing it, but I can tell you that it's probably the opposite problem. People wait way too long after communities like this. In, in the independent living communities, and we do quite a bit of that around the country that are associated with these, the median age at entry there is still eighty years of age, even though you can move in at sixty-two. And, and quite frankly, people who are sixty-two myself, you know, I'm not ready yet for anything like that. There's, it is, it is really, trying to give you a short answer to a long, a long explanation.
So it's a, a terrace between self-sustaining and a nursing home. It's somewhere in between?
Well, it's in between, but you'd be surprised, it is the same age group, though, that is dealing, that is utilizing services. You will find very few people that are seventy or less, frankly, I would even say seventy-five or less today, today's, today's age, that would be interested in this type of facility. As I said, nationally, the median age at entry is about eighty-two.
Does your compilation reflect something?
I'm sorry.
Does your compilation here of your other communities reflect that type of...
Oh, very much so, sir. The, I mentioned median age at entry because that's a standard that we use, but in communities that have been open a while, we use that because some just opened and some have been open for forty years. There are communities today where the, the average age within the community approaching ninety years of age. So it's not, honestly, it's a wonderful environment for somebody who needs, who needs assistance in living their, their life, but it is, you know, it's not what we would call the active lifestyle that, of the, of what we call the young retiree or first-generation retiree that, that is out there.
Joe, getting to Mr. Rizzi's point about parking, at the workshop last week, you mentioned that it's extremely rare for the residents to have fixed vehicles.
We, I would be shocked if in this particular community, there would be residents with cars that would equal the fingers on this hand. It just simply is not a, not a strong... Most people need to be in a community like that because they no longer have the confidence to drive, or frankly, sometimes the family is taking, taking the keys away. So, and that's why, it's related to the age also. I mean, eyesight has diminished, hearing has diminished during that period of time, and there's, there's extremely low usage of that, and I, I would think there would, I wouldn't be surprised if there were none at some point.
In your, in your business models practically, do you use restrictions?
Do we use, I'm sorry, absolutely.
Do you use restrictions for your tenants, for lack of a better word?
Restrictions on...
On parking?
Parking?
Restriction that they are not allowed with a car, they're not allowed to own a car. But so it is, they are able, but just as a general observation, it's very, very few of the nature of the clientele are able to operate it.
Right. It would not be accurate for me to say it's never done, but if I were casually talking to you, I'd say it's probably never done. But there are occasions where it happens.
Well, it's wrong, the subject, cars. Any rehabs that I've gone to, visiting people, et cetera, before you can walk past that, that manned entrance, you have to sign it. So it would make sense to me that you'd be able to, because we're going to have a parking variance issue here, you should be able to supply to this board and/or to the village board, a, looking at the, the various facilities you have, you should, you should be able to tell us to a certainty, you know, within a couple percent one way or the other, how, what, how many people are actually visiting at any point in time? Follow what I'm saying? We have limited number of parking, so I know that on Sunday, I can look and see that today, spread across this eight-hour visiting time period, we had eighty-seven visitors come to see our population. That would give a sense of comfort because we don't have a whole lot of parking. So it makes sense to me that since you are keeping track of visitors for patients or for residents, that you should be able to supply us with a certainty, the, the average, if you will, by hour of, how many people come visit these people? And, and we can certainly take that information then and have, feel more comfortable about the number of cars or the number of spaces that are there, because you are going to have to entertain the zoning board of appeals for a parking variance, and certainly you have empirical evidence that says, we have, you know, we have all these registrations from all over the country, and during this time on a Sunday, we get this number of people.
We'll make our best efforts to get you a good date on that. I, I will tell you, that's not what I would call standard data that we can just put our hands on at any, at any given time, but we'll make a, we'll make our best efforts.
But probably, one, one facility is pretty, probably fairly close to the rest, and if you, I know you keep that data in your best...
We'll, we'll do our best to, I might have to actually ask for, for a, you know, weekly survey of, you know, a, a couple of our other applied facilities.
Well, if you're familiar with our village, you'll know that the number one parking, the number one problem we have here is parking. This is another project where the parking is not ample for the size of the structure. So I know that that is going to be a hot button for, certainly for this board, and certainly for the village board, and certainly for the zoning board of appeal. If you have evidence, if you have that kind of data, which you do have, you have it in your registry, in your registry, I'm sure you do. I've never been in a nursing facility where you didn't have to sign in. You want to know who's in the building at any point in time, I would think, unless I'm wrong. Maybe I made an improper assumption.
Yeah, those are not what I would call historical records that are kept for a significant period of time, so...
Well, you have some time to keep them, so I suppose you're still...
Fair enough.
I think it's, I think it's valuable information.
That's fair, we're going to make our best here.
Especially as you move forward, and not necessarily just with us, but certainly it's information that, that might help.
Great, thank you.
I have one more question, no? And I, and I think you should give this one some thought, because I think this is the overriding question. Why should we, as a board, or why should the village approve a project like this in the middle of our downtown area, when this could be put in, for argument sake, an industrial area or a business area other than a downtown area? Make your best case for that. And if you want to take some time to think about that and come back to the podium, you know, feel free, if you have an answer. But, you know, we, I think we'd all like that, I know members of the board would like to know that. Why are we putting this, other than the fact that the parcel is available? Give me your best case for that. Like I say, I'll give you some time to think about it if you want.
I'm not sure at any time I'd make any difference on it. I'm not even sure I'm the best person to answer that. I can, I can tell you, though, that communities like this are in all of these different environments. They are in downtown areas, they are in, you know, on main streets of major cities and small towns, they're in suburban areas, on pastoral lands. There is, again, I can only speak from personal experience of being involved with them around the country, there, there is no standard site for any of these. There are very specific program needs within the, the footprint of, of the building, but outside of the building, I'm not, I'm not sure I would be the right person to say that. I have experience in, in all of these locations, and they, they run essentially the same within them.
Have you done any preliminary calculations for your wastewater requirements?
I, I have done it.
If you're doing laundry on-site, you're going to have a lot of volume.
We had, I had initial contact with a village person who addresses that, I believe it's Joe Perry. I had conversations with him. He advised me that he didn't, he did not feel that we would have any issues with regard to the sewer, sewer hookup and sewer capacity.
Joe Perry's the fire chief.
Well, then, I'm sorry, I haven't been...
But H2M is all, is all the engineers, and you have them on staff, right?
Joe Dean.
Joe Dean, I apologize. Joe Perry is the fire chief, I'm sorry. I've been hearing that name a lot this week.
Yeah, I can't imagine why.
Yes, I'm sorry, Joe Dean. But he had indicated that he did not have concerns regarding the wastewater production from the site and the capacity of the sewer, of the, of the sewer system that kind of If there are no further questions of Mr. Brusella, I'd like to call my next lady.
Your show now.
Thank you. Mr. Mixdorf?
Yes.
Say your name.
My name is Patrick Mixdorf, I work for EDA Architects, we're based in New Brick Work, and are specialists in LWD housing.
Mr. Mixdorf and his, and his architectural firm designed the building proposed to go on this site, and what I'd ask Patrick to do is just go over the, the building proposed and give the board an overview of its design and why it's designed that way and what particular features there are.
Absolutely. I think if I can, I can add a couple things to a couple points that you raised with Mr. Brusella.
Sure, fill for it.
One...
Where are our fact findings?
From my point of view...
If you want to put any, please.
From my point of view as the architect, the, the principal difference between nursing home and assisted living, as in, as it affects the life safety codes, NFPA, building code, residents of nursing home are quote-unquote "not capable of self-preservation." They're in a situation, they're bedridden, they're whatever, they are not capable of moving themselves out in any way, shape, or form in case of an emergency. Residents of assisted living, on the contrary, are considered to be, at a minimum, have limited capability of self-preservation. So in order to get classified as one or the other, that's the, that's the sort of merit, the bare-bones standard that you'd have to meet. There are things in terms of caregiving in a nursing home, types of meds that are capable of being, you essentially are not... you essentially are not providing meds, um, in an assisted living facility, you're really only assisting people with taking meds, whereas in a nursing home, you can, you can dispense narcotics, you can do all those stuff. I mean, the, the list of things that you can do in a nursing home that you can't do in an assisted living facility is pretty significant. But that, the capability of self-preservation thing is a key element of the building code as it, as it defines who it is that lives in these two facilities. On the, the last issue that you raised is why you would want this facility in downtown? Because most of the residents of this facility are gonna be people from Patchogue or the immediate surroundings and they wanna live downtown because this is the place that they know. That's sort of my, uh, two cents on that. As far as the design of the building, obviously we have a, a fairly constrained site and we're trying to get a lot onto it. What we've tried to do with the design is, um, respond to what's a fairly nice urban downtown in Patchogue where you have street frontage, you have sort of that classic, um, Main Street USA sort of feel. So what we've done is we've, we've continued the street frontage along the entire width of East Main Street, um, up, up to the three stories, so it kept with the scale of the rest of the buildings in downtown. And then, to the extent that we needed to make the building bigger to accommodate the program elements, we, we set that taller portion back in the site so it was less sort of obtrusive on your sense of what your downtown was like. Um, in terms of the, the act, the, the specific appearance, there wasn't one particular style that stood out to us in our, our experience in Patchogue. So we tried to pick something that would be appropriate to sort of the, the era, um, of Patchogue in terms of its architectural design. It's not a particular style exactly, but it's a very sort of urban solution, um, without being sort of a pastiche and without being sort of, it's obviously not some sort of crazy modern expression or anything like that. It looks like it, it seems appropriate to the building of Patchogue. The only consequence of that is, um, we do have the entrance off of Main Street. We've got a, that goes underneath a portion of the building. That opening is large enough to accept emergency vehicles like fire trucks, it's tall enough to, for them to pass easily under that, but obviously in the case of an actual emergency, you wouldn't wanna drive your equipment underneath a building on fire. So there's another secondary access to the interior of the site from, from, uh, Maple Street.
And also another one from, or will be another one from Main Street.
Okay.
There is one, in the adjoining parcel, through the fence-
Absolutely, and we have maintained that in the middle there-
Be a secondary access from Main Street as well.
And all honestly, you can also get into the site from the bank parking lot.
Well, that's gonna be an easement, right, but that, that's for later.
Sure. Um, in terms of the construction of the building, um, so, and I'll, I'll, I'll be as detailed, you can tell me to stop or you can tell me to elaborate more, but assisted living, um, in the current status of the building codes is required to be an I-1 occupancy, which is an institutional occupancy. Um, in New York State, you guys for a long time had enriched housing and adult home and some sort of other things that have been slowly phased out and been replaced with the International Building Code. I-1 is the current designation for assisted living, so it's an institutional occupancy. As a result of that, you're talking about a non-combustible building, um, in some form, so all of the materials, all the structural materials, um, you essentially can't put any, except for some minor sort of, like, you could have some paneling or whatever, pretty much all of the, the materials inside the building would be highly resistant to fire. Um, in addition to that, we're talking about a fully sprinkled building, um, NFPA thirteen, depending on how familiar you are with, uh, NFPA, so NFPA thirteen R is a residential standard that you might have found in a apartment building. Um, NFPA thirteen requires every space inside the building, including every closet, bathroom-
To be sprinkled.
To be sprinkled.
And that's what this status is?
And that's what this will be. And so far, the, the, as I understand it, no person has ever died in a fully sprinkled building in the United States. That's the last I understood of that to be, so. This is a very safe building. In terms of the outside materials, we're talking about a combination of brick and stucco. And then, I guess, um, two things, uh, one thing that we brought you, was brought last week was the, the size of the elevator. Um, and so what I have here is a, some copies of a diagram that shows the size of the elevator and a stretcher meeting the, the requirements from the New York State Code, um, for stretcher size, fitting inside that elevator, it's a four thousand pound elevator. Um, next time you're in a building that has an elevator, you're probably gonna be in a twenty-five hundred pound elevator, so this is-
How many elevators do you, uh, answer?
There's currently three shown, two that go up to the memories, to the fourth and fifth, and one that goes up only to the fourth floor. One thing that, uh, Bill brought up, um, because this is a five-story building in part, I suspect that at least one, if not two, of the stairs that go to the fifth floor will require a standpipe. Um, so there will be obviously adequate provisions for fighting fires at the upper levels of the building as well.
I think you also said that there's an emergency generator that will be able to provide backup power to the elevators in the event of a power failure?
Right, generally speaking, the way it's set up is that, um, the, the emergency generator will be capable of, uh, providing what they call life safety lighting, um, so that you could exit the building. But typically in these facilities, you go beyond that. You try to create a facility where if you needed to, you could shelter the residents in place for a few days. Um, you'd provide, uh, some amount of emergency power to the kitchen so that they could provide hot food. They wouldn't be able to run every aspect of the kitchen, so they're not gonna provide five course meals to the residents during that period, but over a three or four day period, maybe even, um, usually residents, family members come and give residence if it gets down to that. But the idea is that the, the residents don't have to leave immediately on the, in, in the case of a, uh, uh, loss of power.
But that would, that would extend to obviously being able to keep the building heated and cool?
Absolutely, we typically don't air condition, uh, the building, uh, with emergency power because it requires an enormous amount of emergency power to do that. But typically, we, we're capable of heating the building. Um, a lot of times, there'll be one or two outlets in each, um, apartment. We haven't gone into this level of detail, but that's sort of speaking typically about these sorts of facilities. Um, you, we, we typically wouldn't be able to run all three elevators simultaneously, but you set it up so that one cannot, they can all operate, but they have to operate sort of independently of one another because that's another large load on a generator, um, to move an elevator.
So you haven't really settled per se on the building materials because that's something that EDA or B would probably call out at, at, in a future date, but, uh, we are talking now about, because it's above three floors and because it's a fireproofed building, we're definitely talking about brick and mortar?
Yes.
Construction here?
Yes, we are.
There may be a facade brick? Or would it be a real brick?
It's my understanding that in this, in your construction environment, that real brick is a viable, is viable economically. That's not the case in every jurisdiction, um, some jurisdictions, we do a lot of work in New England, sort of farther north of here, you can't afford brick anywhere. Um, we do projects in the Midwest, you can build all kinds of buildings out of brick and it's no issue. Um, so, every jurisdiction is a little different, as I understand it, this jurisdiction is favorable to real brick.
Any other questions from the architectural standpoint?
Yeah, we had a, you know I'm gonna ask you. We had a, uh, parting, uh, commentary regarding the window use with the air conditioner. Any headway on that?
Um, headway in the sense that we will certainly not do anything, uh, we would, we would seek out an alternate, uh, solution to the heating and cooling of the resident rooms if the village found that objectionable, for sure. Um, we're not, there are other ways to solve that problem. Um, that is a convenient way to provide each individual unit with heating and cooling, um, that they can control of their own, but certainly there are other ways to accomplish that.
If, uh, fire escapes became necessary on this building, was that something you could build into it?
It's an interesting question. Um, building codes have sort of moved beyond fire escapes because we're required to calculate, um, the amount of exiting required in, in stairs. So what we typically do and what we would typically find is that we pretty significantly exceed the amount of exits that are required. So, at a minimum, you'd have to have two off of every floor. Um, but you have to go through an exercise where you, you tally up the number of residents and you divide them by a certain number of, certain amount of space and that tells you how much stair you need. Um, so we would go through those calculations. Fire escapes are really a relic of buildings built with a wildly inappropriate amount of exiting. Um, so, we wouldn't assume that that would be necessary, we would assume we would more than exceed the requisite amount of exiting, um, simply with the interior stairs that we're proposing. And each one of those stairs is protected from the rest of the, uh, the building by a two-hour separation.
So, although you downplay the concept of fire escape though, you still can use it if necessary?
Yes.
There's no other solution for the east side of this building, it is a possibility?
Yes, if, if for some reason that was, that was what we got down to, sure.
Okay.
As far as now, there's still the-
Anybody else have any questions for this gentleman at this time?
We'll be back.
We'll be talking with you, right?
And it's our typical process to, to meet with the building-
Inspector.
Inspector, to meet with the fire department on at least a couple of more occasions to make sure that everybody's fine, because eventually we'll get down to some very specific details about what the fire department connection looks like and all that sort of thing.
Don't leave EMS people out of that either.
Sure.
I know them pretty well. Okay.
If I may, I'd like to call Sharon Norton-Rammer with H2M, our site engineering firm.
Good evening, I'm Sharon Norton-Rammer from H2M Plots in the Godwater Hollow Road in Melville. If I may speak to the site plan, um, although Mr. Vannessa's done a beautiful job of explaining a lot of the aspects of the plan, I just would like to talk about some traffic flow, et cetera.
Sure.
And I'm not sure how you want me to handle the audience, but-
Well, if the audience wants to come up and watch, since there's only two in the audience, I think?
If you're interested, I'd scoot my back. A- as was mentioned, we have access both on our front edge on East Main Street as well as Maple Avenue. We are providing an entrance in only underneath the canopy, which will be lit, uh, appropriately in non-sunlight hours, uh, and providing in this area, we're tucking in our, uh, utilities such as the generator that's been spoken about, the transformer, uh, the trash enclosure, et cetera, as well as the service entrance at this point. We then provide our, um, loading facility as well as a dedicated ambulance space and handicap, uh, parking spaces. We anticipate that, um, visitors would generally park here. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, most folks will come to the main door, but we have visitors park here and staff in the rear, and again, we would have very few residents, uh, needing parking at the facility. We provide both an in and an out of Maple and adequate turnaround to get folks around. As to landscaping, which was mentioned earlier, we do have a residential, we have a home here to the north. We provided an eight-foot landscape strip, uh, or a buffer area. Um, work with our landscape folks could be sure that that's adequate to provide decent vegetation and maintain it, uh, over time. As well as, as we developed this plan, your plan, I think your third sheet of your plan shows some typical landscaping, uh, but that will get more involved as we come to the, uh, site plan, the actual site plan approval process. Um, as to the, um, and then also, we have a lighting plan before you which demonstrates that with this building, we can provide zero-foot candles adjoining the residential parcels.
Now Sharon, with the, with the present engineered site plan that we've submitted as part of the, as part of our application, we are providing sixteen parking spaces, we're providing this configuration. I, I'm, I'm aware that, um, just last week, um, we had contact, um, with regard to firefighting access with, on the east side of the building. Can you go through the process that has occurred since we were alerted to that concern?
Certainly, we spent a fair amount of time, uh, working on that aspect of this proposal. Um, we, I met yesterday with George Hoffman, with Fire Chief Perry, to discuss what accommodations would be necessary in order to accommodate that concern that the, uh, fire truck, your ladder truck, um, that can reach to the fifth story or above, I believe it can reach a hundred feet, uh, could access the rear of the building. The architects, uh, we've worked together to provide a change in the floor plan to provide a twenty-foot access way to the east side of the building. What we would propose is similar to where, I think you've heard about it, Copper Beach, uh, or other facilities, probably throughout the village, we lock the town of Okavango, we have pavers that commit landscaping, um, to grow through. So it provides a green garden look where it can accommodate the weight of the, uh, fire truck. What that does for us back here in this garden is it provides, uh, the ability to fight a fire. We've got a five-story building in the back here, is what we talked about, we go to four here. Um, so that would allow us to pull a truck in, um, allow access to those upper floors should it be necessary, but continues to allow a garden for residents in the back. In fact, it provides the, even better stabilization, um, you know, for people that are walking that might, you know, become a little unsteady or what have you. So that is what we would, uh, propose. Uh, we met with Fire Chief Perry, as I said, yesterday. Uh, we talked about a lot of different aspects, I think we made a, a lot of progress and we look forward to working with, um, the fire departments as we go forward.
I'd like to provide the board with basically a markup.
Sure.
It's not a fully engineered plan, but based upon the concerns that were expressed to us, we had Patrick and his staff work up some modifications to the building footprint, Sharon and her staff, uh, provided input on that as well, and then it was shown to the fire chief yesterday. This is that markup, it is, as indicated, in no way a finished plan, there is still analysis that we run on it, but this is at least along the lines of what is being considered in order to address the concern regarding the access to the east of the side of the property. And we, as, as Sharon has indicated, we're permitted to continue to work with the fire department, with the fire chief, make sure that we have, uh, a satisfactory resolution to the issue as, as it's been presented. Um, this particular plan, uh, was prepared by Patrick and it actually shows an overlay of the proposed building in, in red compared to the, uh, excuse me, the modified proposed building in red as compared to the building that was submitted on the original plan. You can see how the, the plan, um, the new, new proposed revisions provide for that access point for, for a truck to get in on the east side.
Ultimately, the biggest consequence is a loss of parking spaces.
Yeah.
Uh, it's possible to re, uh, arrange the building, maintain the number of units, um, but it's hard to do that and keep the maximum number of parking spaces.
Yeah, what is the requirement?
I think it goes down to ten, um, so it's down to fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, but it's, it's really down five because we, we were going to land bank, uh, four spaces, so it really goes down to six.
Right.
But it, it is an impact and that's something that has to be weighed, uh, for, for the consideration of the board.
Progress? Okay. What else would you like to talk about on the site plan?
I'd like to answer questions-
Any discussion on the easement we talked about?
On the easement to the back parking lot?
The back parking lot?
We're working on that as well as, uh, we did talk about the possibility of fire access only adjoining property-
Right.
As opposed to going underneath the property.
Could you just maybe bring your board up to speed on that, because you and I discussed this, but I didn't discuss that one.
Yes, what we discussed was the possibility of obtaining, uh, any fire gate here or a fresh gate, uh, onto the balanced property, so we hope to be able to achieve that. One of the things that Chief Perry brought up yesterday is that he proposed to go through the adjoining property should he need then, then underneath, uh, so those are two of the alternates that we're discussing.
Just gives us more options, because you know, it's real life, somebody comes in and stops a car right and then, you know, locks things in. But, but having that eat, as well as if we have to stage, uh, emergency vehicles, we can stage them in the parking lot in the back. So it, 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 from a fighter, firefighting or an EMS perspective, it makes the site plan a lot more realistic, having that easement through to that parking lot. If you had to bring in, uh, a bunch of vehicles, you'd wanna stage- If you had to bring in a bunch of vehicles, you'd want to stage them there and they can enter and exit. Not exit, enter the property, but actually just do everything from that parking lot. So having that gate would be, uh, a big, uh, big improvement for the site plan.
So it will be per cell management.
Yeah, I think that's important.
And as indicated, we are committed to continuing to work with the village fire department, the Fire Chief, to make sure that this issue is, is resolved to the satisfaction of the village.
Excellent.
Third one. I have one more witness, if I may, I have Sean Morion, he's with Morion Engineering. He's a recognized, uh, transportation engineer who has specified as a traffic expert before multiple boards. Um, we asked Sean to take a look at the site and its proposed operation and to give us an analysis with regard to both the traffic and the parking, uh, that would be generated.
Uh, can you move any of Sean Morion, with Morion Engineering, and she's at one ten Jericho Turnpike, the floor of Falcon New York. Evening, Chairman, members of the board. Um, one of the things that I want to hit on, um, right away is the fact that parking is obviously an issue that is of concern for this application, not only because we have a variance, but because of the downtown nature of this, uh, site. We want to make sure that the site is able to satisfy the parking demands as are associated with the use as we're proposing. One of the things that we did, above and beyond looking at the standard ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, is we did a site-specific study of the Sunrise Assisted Living Facility in Holbrook. One of the things that we, uh, would like to mention is that that facility provides assisted living and Alzheimer and memory care services. So it is similar in, um, the services that it provides, it's a few miles from this site. It's where Waverly and Patchak Hobart Road meet, uh, at the traffic signal is, is the location. Um, we went to that site, we found that during the peak on Saturday, that site has, uh, representative of the site, of the sites that we're proposing would generate forty-two parked vehicles on Saturday. That was the peak number during the morning, it was twenty-eight and in the evening it was forty-one.
How many beds at that facility?
It has a hundred beds, but those numbers are, um, adjusted up to reflect a facility of a hundred and forty-five beds, similar to the site that we have here. So the actual numbers that we saw were one and a half times less than those. Um, so as stated, we did look at the standard ITE and a site-specific study in the, in the proximity to this site. We found that the number of parking stalls provided, we feel is sufficient to accommodate the anticipated demand generated by this site. We are seeking a change of zone for this application. We feel that the site as proposed will generate less traffic than some of the other uses that may be allowed within the current zoning. The site as proposed would generate less than sixty trips during any of the peak hours. So it's approximately one car every minute to or from the site. The site is aligned with, uh, traffic signals on Ocean and Main Street, Main Street and Maple and Oak and Maple. So regardless of how you come to or from the site, you will be accessing the site through various traffic signals which monitor and control the traffic flow at those intersections. So as the site is generating a small number of vehicles, each time the traffic signal goes through a continuous rotation of its phases, you'd only be getting one to two vehicles during any one of those phases. So it's not a, a volume of traffic that would be readily noticeable, um, to someone that was driving through those intersections. So what we did is we took counts at the surrounding intersections, we added the volume, not only from this facility, but the ambient background growth that's associated with the site and the different communities, people moving in, other things. We also reached out to, uh, VHB Engineering and contacted them about the Tritech Downtown redevelopment project. We obtained some information from them, we also looked at the final compact, uh, statement that is online and we used the numbers and volumes generated by that proposed site, just currently under construction, to add into our numbers to look at a potential future build which would occur within approximately two years of approval. We feel that it will take a few years, uh, for the site to be fully developed and then also for the residency to, uh, build up. Obviously, when you open the door, it won't be fully occupied, so it'll take some time for the site to become fully occupied. We wanted to take into account the ambient growth and also the other projects that are currently underway in the village. Um, so when we did that, we looked at the volume of traffic generated by this site and we feel that it will be, um, able to fit into the existing roadway network. We don't feel that there would be any major modifications that would be required. We are providing two access points. The access point that's on East Main Street leads into a drop-off area that's in front of the lobby. The main purpose of that is to bring people into the main lobby that are not parking their car and walking back to the door. Employees would be more likely to use the driveway on Maple, park their vehicle and then walk into work. Um, the cutout in the front is also used by the ambulatory, uh, transit bus that is provided by the facility. Instead of parking the bus and then walking everybody through the parking lot, it's pulled directly in front of the door so people go right into the lobby. We feel that's an added benefit and a safety factor that will be helpful to the people that are, uh, being transported on and off the site. The driveway has been proposed to be an entrance only to minimize the number of crossings going across, uh, the front of the building and onto East Main Street. We would prefer any of the exiting traffic as it's designed to go through the signal so there'll be, uh, more control and it'll be a safer access onto East Main Street. So that's a general overview, once again, we're seeking a recommendation to move this project forward. Obviously, it's a work in progress and over the last week there has been changes to the site plan. So we're continually trying to fine tune what we're proposing and we're working closely with the site engineer and architects to bring our study up to date with those changes.
Did you take a look at the queuing count at Maple and Main and what backs up on Maple Avenue?
Yes, we did, and this driveway is several hundred feet, I don't know the exact distance, uh, away from that signal. But at peak, there's a little less than two hundred vehicles over the course of an hour that will exit onto East Main Street from Maple. Um, and there's approximately thirty to thirty-six cycle rotations, uh, within that signal. So it's less than ten vehicles per cycle at, at peak times.
Is that currently or?
That's currently, and, and what will happen is some of those vehicles will arrive when the light's green. So you won't necessarily have all of those vehicles stopped. If you arrive on the green, you simply go through. But over the course of the hour, there'll be, uh, less than ten during any given cycle and a portion of those would be a lot, arrive at the light when the light's green.
You anticipate any queuing taking place on Main Street due to a drop-off area, perhaps block?
Any queuing, you said?
You anticipate any queuing on Main Street due to the fact that the drop-off area is right at the entrance?
What they provide is, is a drop-off area for a vehicle to pull in, any other vehicles could drive past. Your question, I believe, would be, is there, if there's two vehicles arriving at the same time. And we feel that the, uh, site will not generate that volume of traffic where you'll have an overlap of people being or in or out of the facility. If it's a family member bringing someone in as opposed to the service being run by the facility, that person could go directly into the parking lot or they could double park within the driveway, not on the side. Because there's, there's a cutout.
I see, I see the cutout.
Right, there's a cutout.
So that cutout that you have there is actually deep enough to totally absorb a vehicle in that and still be able to drive by without, how, how much, I don't, I don't have a scale here, so.
The driveway itself, I believe, is sixteen feet wide and the, uh, that cutout is eight feet wide. So it's a little car, less than six or less.
I guess only four feet, okay.
Yeah.
So if you had an ambulance in there, obviously there's, you know, that's what you're gonna have for the most part or car. It's still plenty, okay. But you can see now why we need to obviously have a secondary access into the property for emergency vehicles because some, the ambulance is there and somebody stops to let off grandma or something and, and we have to get through, so.
Sean, I, I know that the modified plan has only just been generated and I don't know how much you've had a chance to look at it, but if, I, I know that we spoke this afternoon and you did indicate that, uh, you were aware that the modified plan reduced the parking potentially to, I think it was fifty-eight, uh, parking spaces. Even with that, would this, uh, would that site accommodate the parking need based upon your studies?
Yes, and, uh, once again, that was based not only on the ITE, which is the national standard, but also on our study of the site name Holbrook. So both of those studies generated numbers that would be less than the fifty-eight provided on this site. And those numbers are all factored to, uh, account for the number of beds provided in this facility.
Thank you. The board has no further.
Any other questions right now? I'm sure we'll be open in the future.
Thank you, thank you very much.
That's our direct presentation, Mr. Chairman. And that, um, I will add my two cents, if you will, as to your question regarding why this site. Uh, I think I touched upon it early on and, and I think what Mr. Priscilla said was, was very relevant. There's no right area for a facility like this, they are found all throughout, uh, different types of communities, whether it be industrial areas, pastoral areas or, or urban areas. Uh, as I touched upon in my introduction, I personally feel, and I'm not speaking as an, as an expert planner in any way, shape or form, but I personally feel that being in the downtown area provides those who are ambulatory with the ability and, and who are basically, uh, independent or close to fully independent with the ability to still be immersed in the community. You have a wonderful downtown community here, it would allow people to, to use the shops, use the restaurants, use the, the various retail centers and, and other storefronts that are along the area. It, and, and it would benefit not only them, but also the, the businesses in the community. Additionally, as you know, there's the, based on the design that has been laid out, uh, that front section, uh, is basically proposed to be a bistro-type area within the building for the residents. It will have the look and feel certainly from the street and along the streetscape of a coffee shop, a nice, uh, cafe. And it will just lend to the, lend to the streets, uh, streetscape that has already been established in the, uh, in the downtown area. So that's my two cents. Um, thank you very much for your time, we put a lot of information on the record and we're prepared to answer any questions after the public comment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for you, it's the applicator, Mr. Bojek? Our videographer.
Back again.
Please state your name and address for the record.
John Bojek, Gagdson Street. Um, you know, I feel like I'm back at the application for Emporium in the sense that, uh, I don't see, I don't see that wonderful, uh, rendering, but it's a beautiful building, it's a great, uh, asset to the village. But, uh, just like the owners of the Emporium downplayed the impact of parking, I'm just worried about the impact of parking. Uh, I think those concerns are very valid. Um, anyone knows pretty much that parking on Main Street is almost at saturation level, if not already at saturation level. Uh, even the addition of not too many more cars may bring us to paralysis on Main Street. So for that reason, I would certainly recommend that no variance be granted for parking. Um, they only have to come up with a couple extra and they should. I don't think the planning board should put itself in a position with the community as well that, uh, we're giving another allowance, uh, but common sense suggests that they should build every single parking space required by law.
Fortunately, we're in a position where we're not the ones who would grant that variance. That would be, the zoning board appeals, we'll have to grant them a, a parking variance, but your, your points, your point is well taken. There's no debating the fact we're at saturation of the parking. And, and certainly that's, that, that is a concern, I think that everyone here shares, is the parking. And that's why I asked them to go through the lengths that, uh, that I did as far as their, their visitors registry and show us how many people are coming, because that, that information is available.
Right.
And, and that would be valuable information, because let's face it, they're building this facility to do this. I don't think it's gonna turn around and become a motel six, five years from now where the parking situation would be vastly different. Because the building's not being engineered for that kind of thing where you could really change, you know, and make it a different thing. But I think certainly they can come, I think they're going to have to come forth with more empirical evidence about the number of parking spaces if in fact they do go for variance.
Okay.
And we did put a hurdle on them with the change in the site plan too, uh, because we did make them remove a few spaces based on the fact that, you know, I got this thing about getting fire trucks in where you can rescue people. So we did, there has been some changes and that is still under refinement. So where this parking space thing is actually gonna wind up, we don't know what the variance is gonna be, but your point's well taken.
All right, you know, and I'm grappling as a citizen with what you have to grapple as board members. This is wonderful. It is, I have no doubts about it being good for the village, but the, we have to face some realities about how it's gonna impact Main Street and other businesses. Um, it could be negative and that will overwhelm the wonderfulness of this proposal, which is, it is, it's a good proposal. Uh, but I think that's a concern and you, you're gonna have to grapple with it more than me. But I, I, I know that other residents are gonna feel the same way and this, and these individuals and they could face other boards, the trustees. I will not be the only person they're gonna have to face on this issue. As you well know, the community, the business community in particular is crying. Um, crying that they are, they're in danger of losing their businesses because of the present parking situation. Uh, I think everyone's aware of that.
Well, I think one thing that can be said in its favor is that of all the possible uses that could go there, this is probably one of the lower impact uses that, that could actually go there. I mean, it could put another Emporium on the spot and, you know, then, then, then I would need this for other reasons.
And actually, there's one thing that was mentioned by one of the witnesses and, and that might be something that might save the project, which is I don't know really what the village board plans in terms of additional parking. They have plans, I'm, I'm more familiar with their plans of Church Street. Maybe they have some plan for this part of the village too that might alleviate the parking concerns.
I would hope there's something, I believe there's probably some things in works, I know that they're thinking about things, but that's up to them to.
Right, and, and if that becomes a factor, then my, my concerns, my, my, my concerns would be less. But as of today, even two years from now, if this showed up on Main Street, I think there's gonna be problems, major ones for the village matchup.
Okay. Any else, any, yes, Ms. Miller. Just come forward, say your name and address for the record and tell us what's on your mind.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I see, well, I see the city, if you have said everybody else, name and address and tell us what's on your mind.
Josephine Mill, two seven six West Avenue. I want to comment about, um, you know, your question, which I thought was a good one, why downtown? I'm not for or against at this point, probably more for than against. Um, I think in addition to the reasons presented by the other gentleman that, um, you know, this allows people who are older but independent to enjoy the village. I'd like to make the point that the village doesn't just belong to the young hipsters. The elderly people are entitled to enjoy the village too. And in terms of parking, okay, most, most visiting will be done during daytime hours when parking pressures aren't not as intense as in the evening. So, you know, when family comes to visit, they don't usually visit in the evening, they visit usually during the day. And the other thing is, you know, we've been asking or we've, we've heard that we need feet on the street during the day and this is one way of putting feet on the street. You come to visit your elderly mother, not me, not yet.
You have at least thirty-five to forty years.
Atlas, atlas. I'll be like my mom who, at ninety-six, was living in her own apartment.
God bless.
That's my plan. God willing.
That's a nightmare for these guys. Expect you to announce seventy-seven.
The thing is, you know, you come to visit your elderly mother, you take her out for lunch. You're not taking her out for dinner, you're taking her out for lunch. So it, and you're walking around, you're not just going into a restaurant. So maybe you go into Queen City Cupcakes, maybe you go into the Cheese Patch or the Stereo Lane, just even just browsing. You browse, you buy something. Or residents also have needs, let's take clothing, okay? They don't go out and purchase clothing on their own, some child, some adult child has to take them. I know, I've been there. You don't really wanna haul them up to the mall, to the, to the mall or even up to Target. So, you know, y- you try to shop locally, who knows, maybe it will spark some businesses. I, I think, you know, it, this could be a wonderful thing for the village. And I think the parking issue might not be as. And I think the parking issue might not be as precious as we think.
Is Mr. Bojack going to let you sit next to him?
We're allies, but sometimes we disagree.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
John, John has to agree with me, I'm older.
Mr. Bojack, do you wish to retort? Does anybody want to respond to anything?
Nope.
No, I don't think so. Well, I do have, is there anyone else that would, yes, Mr. Sol?
I would speak to the issue of variance, because Mr. Rizzi raised a...
Sure, should you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Gasper Solero, sixty-six Mainford Avenue, Patchogue. Mr. Rizzi raised the issue of seeking a variance for a nursing home. Well, the only reason they're seeking a variance, in this instance, for a nursing home, is because my understanding in the Village of Patrick is there are no zonings for assisted living. So they, they are forced to apply on the nursing home. Consequently, they must seek a variance, because there are no rules or regulations for assisted living. Had there been rules or regulations, they may not have had to seek a variance, because the parking requirements, based on the expert testimony, may be less than that, which is required for a nursing home.
That may be a little, that may not be absolutely correct. I think that...
Well, I made a bet on it, Mr. Chairman, I, but I think there's a reasonable, reasonableness to my comments. There is, there are no requirements for assisted living.
I think there's a code pass that might, might actually address this more succinctly, but we'll get into that.
Okay.
But, but I understand your point. Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Rowe. Good evening, Your Honor. Name and address for the record.
John J. Rowe, the third, twelve Pearl Street, Belport, New York. I have an interest in this application since we own the land. I find it intriguing that this is the second time it's come before this board. This is a thousand percent, or I can't tend to have any percent, different than the first application.
Yes.
I would obviously note that the facade pretty much picks up on the brown sub facade of the Congregational Church, which is two doors down. So I thought that was a brilliant architectural, um...
Cool.
Part of the, of the presentation. And I think that there are lots of folks who would be willing to come into this facility, because they in turn can stay in the community where their children and grandchildren live. And I echo the comments made by prior speakers that feet on the street are important when it comes down to downtown. And residents here, there'll be a hundred-plus residents that'll be coming into the community to shop and eat here. I'm also chairman of the B I D in the Village of Patchogue, and we've done a traffic study. And we're instituting signage for the public parking lots now. But the study revealed that people, when they park, are willing to walk seven hundred fifty feet from the place they parked their car to the destination. And so we're concerned, the B I D level is anyway, with where people park and how much they're willing to walk. I think most of us are used to pulling up in front of the deli, jumping out, getting a cup of coffee, and moving on. But when you come to a restaurant, if you have to park in back of the library, in back of the brick house, you can walk, and people will do that. So parking is a concern, of course. I think this facility is not going to generate as much parking and access as other establishments that could be built on this property. So I'm in favor of the application for many reasons. Thank you for your consideration.
Indeed. Anyone else wish to speak for against the application? I do have one note. Mr. Bojack, will you?
No.
I thought perhaps you raising your hand.
No, but I ensure through the Rowe Agency, I hope it's my bronze, he's not canceled.
I have a note that I'd just like to put on the record that is signed by Carolyn Fugoe and Diane Trickwall. And it's dated three twenty-six, two thousand thirteen, and it's basically just some random thoughts, so I'll try to, just to get them on the record. She said, one, traffic flow, we have a hard time pulling out of our driveway. Maple Avenue has become a congested area. We understand that. So the board is cognizant of that, of that problem. And, you know, the truth is, as I said in the work session, that if you don't make a left on Maple Avenue to go to Main Street, the only way you can go to Main Street is to go all the way, right now, to River Avenue. If you, because you can't make the left onto Ocean Avenue, and you can't make the left onto Havens Avenue, because that doesn't exist anymore, that's a hole in the ground. So the only thing you can do, I mean, at one time, the county was going to open up and put in a second traffic circle, so we could, you know, open up West Avenue again. That's gone. So you either cut through the Y M C A parking lot, which is an illegal maneuver, because you're really not supposed to be making the left onto Main Street, or you go all the way to River Avenue in order to come all the way back. So, yeah, traffic does tend to queue, unless you're smart enough to go to one-twelve, and people don't like to negotiate opening one-twelve. So if you live in that neighborhood like I do, it's somewhat problematic to get to Main Street. So that's why, you know, we do see more cars on Maple Avenue. Certainly understood what she's saying. She's concerned about entrance and exit facility on Maple Avenue. I think we would address that, or certainly will. Parking, she has a concern of theirs, and separate entrance for ambulants and ambulances, where would that be? So we have her notes, we'll enter, enter them into the record, and also we'll keep them for our future discussions. I think that pretty much all those things are addressed in the preliminary site plan that we've seen, and certainly we appreciate their comments. These are the folks who own the, the home that would be actually, interestingly overlooked by this building. And yet, there's no question about, how come they put a five-story building in my backyard? That's, they missed that question. But that's what they asked, and it's on the record now. So maybe they'll be present at a future public hearings, either with the village board or with us, or however this turns out. So, any other questions from the board for anyone presenting? Anyone in the audience want to do anything? Gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. You've certainly given us a lot to think about. We appreciate the work you put into your presentations. We certainly will deliberate this, and if we have more information that we want, that we need at this point, we'll certainly reach out to you.
Be happy to provide.
And I know you guys will be, you know, will continue to work. I will meet with the fire chiefs in the next couple of days. You guys will be meeting with them. I meet with them every day, so, you know, we'll be going over the site plan. And I think that, you know, from a site plan perspective, we're certainly on the right track, so. Appreciate you guys all coming down tonight.
Thank you for your time.
With permission of the board, I'm going to close this public hearing at this point, and we'll take it in due course, so.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Need a second?
Sir?
Poses in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'd further like to make a motion at this time to take a ten-minute break, give people an opportunity to vial break, and then come back on the record and draw a decision.
Motion on that? What are you, motion on that? Nah, just do it. In the matter of Terrence Smalling, thirty-two Potter Avenue, we closed in Health. Comments? Or motion?
Chairman, that was a fairly straightforward application. I'd like to approve that we, or rather, move that we approve the application of Terrence Smalling, thirty-two Potter Avenue, with the only stipulation being that the applicant has agreed to put final siding on both the east and west ends of the...
Motion for Mr. Wheat.
Second.
Second, Mr. Murphy, who has all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kenneth Mijic, seventy-eight Street, seek permission of retail flower plant, plant flower business. The issues that I think need to be addressed in the approval, if that's the board's wish, centers around signage, as far as not allowing people to come across that parking lot. So he wanted to do it with flower boxes. Is that what he said, if you recall?
Yeah, it was a little nebulous on there, and...
I think a combination of flower boxes and rope?
Yes. It wasn't, wasn't very precise, and clearly, that's a major concern right there.
How about we...
Is this for the ingress, egress, or lower by?
This is the ingress to the Vargan Village, and rather, the separation from that ingress to the rest of the, to the, to the distinctly separate parcels.
So there has to be a clear barrier noted with...
As long as it kept moved.
A non-movable...
And it doesn't allow traffic flow anywhere.
And stops traffic flow. And, and a plan to be submitted to the Building Department for final approval. Does that meet the needs? I think they're kind of... And then also, what was the other issue there? There's not, there's no purchase on the site, what was that?
Parking designation.
Parking designation with the bumpers. What else did we claim from that?
No exterior lighting, ingress, egress, Lake Street only. We didn't, we didn't touch on the, no, I meant to, we didn't touch much on the forward body.
Right. As far as the objections of the public, I mean, if I'm...
The board members were looking for a piece of business property, and it's not overused.
He told us that it wasn't required, and he did have an agreement with, I believe, the Vargan Bills for him and his wife, so it's going to be only working there.
Yeah.
Were able to use the bathroom.
Yeah, I don't believe building department will want to put an outhouse there anywhere. So, so there's not, there's not a requirement, and if he has the, the okay, he's...
There's no buildings, so there really isn't a requirement.
Then there's no requirement for that.
One of the residents spoke, had a concern about delivery time. Maybe we should restrict that to...
Business hours.
Pre-business hours, or... They said it was going to be open for nine o'clock till...
Nine to seven, seven days a week.
There's more than sufficient, there's ample room on the property for the...
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
I mean, it's, it's a big piece of property. I don't see where that's an issue.
I doubt he's going to have delivery at four o'clock in the morning, his plants. You know what I mean?
I mean, essentially, he's only talking about being open for sixty, ninety days.
Yeah.
And how many plants do you have to replace every day? You know, he should be that busy.
That parcel has been empty with nothing on it for as long as I can remember.
Yeah.
To put it to any kind of use, you know?
Agreed.
Okay, we ready to make a motion on this?
I guess we don't, so we don't want, we don't want restricted deliveries necessarily.
I don't, I don't see where it's necessary. I think that parcel is more than enough to handle a tractor trailer if he had to bring it in there. I mean, preferably not, but if he had to, he could. So I'm taking...
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve the application of Kenneth Mijic, seventy-eight Street, with the following stipulations, that the, the area shall be cordoned off from the Vargan Bills parking lot via clearly marked immovable barrier, the precise plan to be agreed upon between the applicant and the Building Department, with the ultimate approval from the Building Department. There should be no exterior lighting on the site. All parking spaces shall be clearly delineated with bumpers. Ingress and egress is to be limited to Lake Street only. And any proposed signage, including, including banners that exceed the limits of the village code, shall be subject to the approval of the architects or of the...
Motion for Mr. Wheat.
Question on...
Question on this, can I get a second on the motion, please? Can I, can I question or motion?
Is a, since it's a county road, is a county notification required?
I did send it out, and we did not get a response.
Okay, so notification has been made.
They have thirty-eight notes.
Recovered, recovered.
Recovered.
I'm happy to finish.
Okay, so motion debated and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried.
We did approve the one-one-fourteen West Main Street.
I'm sorry, no, we did approve the one-seventy-six, West Main Street.
Council feels on the one-fourteen West Main Street that we should employ all the restrictions that have been employed for the outdoor beer garden, quote-unquote, at the Emporium, so we will attach those to this approval.
To the extent, and there's a couple on the Emporium that would be specific for the Emporium.
Right.
This is obviously a much softer use, and they had some different issues in terms of how you got in there, because you're entering that big parking lot. But the extent that it's an outdoor patio, and you want to make sure that they maintain it, that they, they keep it clean, that they keep it controlled, that people are not entering and exiting other than through the establishment, that you're limiting outdoor noise, that you're limiting the, the use of signage on the exterior facilities, it's, and, and you control the lighting, it's the same situation as we had with the Emporium, and the board's already established language to that fact.
And, and a restriction also, that was made in all of us by the public, that they need to police and keep clean.
They need to police, and, and if they don't, their approval can be revoked.
Right. Keep clean, there are planters, which...
Yeah, and if the plants die for whatever the reason, they should replace them, and they...
I want to give that volunteer a pair, a box of rubber gloves before we leave at night, because I can imagine what's killing the flowers.
Yes.
So...
Did we, is, was that exit to the south?
West.
Yeah.
It's drawn on the...
Yeah, that's why I had a question on that, when I saw it, it's southeast, it'd be running right into the building.
It's showing up to the southwest on the sketch.
You were spoken...
Should we, should that be?
Well, there is a sidewalk there.
Emergency only?
There is a sidewalk.
Are we going to get, that, people are going to come from that parking lot to queue?
And there is a sidewalk.
But you can't come in that way. You can't come in that way, you can't come in.
Emergency only.
It's, no, it's outbound only. You can't come in.
But how do you stop?
You're telling me that they're going to lock the doors, so that someone...
Similar like you would have in, in an emergency exit in any facility.
Step by waitresses.
I mean, you have emergency exits in, in buildings. This is going to have to be some kind of gate that is locked from the inside.
Pushboard, or, you know, to open...
The sliding door you're talking about?
No, 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 no.
Over here, look, over here.
No, outside.
We're talking about an exterior exit here, so that should this have to be evacuated, people are not going to climb over the hedges, they can go out of this exit.
Right.
No, this is a sliding glass door.
Yes.
There's also a...
So, I mean, this is only accessible from inside the restaurant.
I'm saying, since there's a sidewalk leading right to the patio, the practicality is that people don't want to go through...
They got to try, that's all.
Just, you know, so far...
Yeah, very well tried, but...
Is there a reason why we have to allow them to put speakers outside? I mean, I don't know that any of the other eating areas have outside speakers.
I think they're limited to some very low...
You know, I think...
It's so low, because if they, if they surpass that, they need to get an outdoor music grid. And I think cabaret license from the village, and that has to be separate application.
I haven't noticed that any of the other sidewalk eating stuff...
If you go, if you just walked down Main Street, you'll, you'll hear music. There's music on Main Street, they got it pumped in all the time.
Chairman of Congress, you know...
But that's a very low, that's a low level.
Yeah, but I don't know that Paradise or Main Street or any of them have outdoor music for the dying. I don't think they do.
I think there probably, well, I think there probably be a competition with the music that's always going on.
Why can't we restrict it? You would just tell them...
I don't think that should have outside speakers.
Yeah. I think we're asking for a problem.
Well, that's fine, we can limit that.
All it is, is this, and then you got something...
Well, it's unfortunate, now we have to have, now we have to make sure someone's informed.
Any outdoor music, it is subject to permission from the village board.
Well, imagine walking down Main Street, and every outdoor thing's going to have to be, I don't know, I just, it's too much.
Yeah, you might...
It'll be a big impact to the business.
Mr. Wheat is making...
I already had that, but I mean, if you want to restrict it completely, but I had that, you know, the village board would have to...
Well, I'd bring a comfort cabaret to it.
Well, yeah, I think there's just so much gray there, that they keep low-level speakers out there.
Where is, well, and if you can't control, and all it is, is a twisted knob, and now you have...
Mr. Rizzi's right, and it won't be invented here. They'll have to go to the village board to get that permission.
And the other portion about, when I talk about the, those specific types of lights, I mean, I found, I thought that was pretty interesting, that Main Street Cafe is, I mean, I kind of liked them, but, you know, it's like Paramount Basulia's in the front of the thing there, the flaming...
Are those really flaming, those things?
Oh, yeah.
Are those really flaming, those things, or are they just like the phony flaming?
I know, that's stick your hand in there.
It's like propane in there.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it's quite.
Those things are right next to cars.
I better get my, cancel my reservation then.
I thought those were, you know, you know, like they had on a Mediterranean manner, they got like a.
Yeah, it's not, well, I think he.
No, those are, those are real, is heat coming out from them? I mean, yeah, it is a, someone could have a problem with it.
Well, before, before we could approve any kind of lighting, they, they have to at least get the cut sheets over and see what it is. If it's pure lighting.
Yeah, no.
We're not really gonna create a lighting pollution problem because.
Goose necks, well, they are goose necks.
Yeah, it's, it's on the front lawn.
They go up to the, uh, the next lane.
No, he was talking about some other, he was talking about something else toward the back.
He has three goose necks on the side of the building.
Ah, lay a post, yeah.
There's three goose necks on the side of the building.
He said some sort of decorative, it was vague, it was a decorative or something or.
And the goose got some on the building, yeah.
I think that they should, but we did, but we did ask, we did ask for cut sheets to be submitted.
So submit, cut sheets to the.
I asked him that.
He would have to come back and have that looked at before anything was done. He also want, it's on the sidewalk, so it's, it's a question of how intrusive it could be.
Yeah.
You know.
Would also include electrical.
You gotta put, he's gotta need a fire other side of certificate for it, how you're gonna put it out. You know, if it's, would you have it outside year round and you gotta, it's gotta be looked at, you know, it's, it would have to be.
Yeah, well, he's gonna submit cut sheets and then we'll look at it separately. We don't have to look at it here separately, a couple of us will look at it.
Yeah, you know, I think he needs to come back and answer questions, so.
Well, if he does, we always have him come back.
Yeah. Should be looked at before you put it up.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. I told him that, that we wanna see cut sheets before we.
How high is he gonna make it, let's, you know.
But even so, he's sixteen feet off the road.
Yeah. Sixty foot off the sidewalk.
He's sixteen feet, sixteen feet.
In concept, he could do it in a way that I think would be very nice.
Yeah.
You, you, you just wanna make sure that it was very nice, it stays that way.
Yeah, I would feel like he's doing just a regular.
More concerned if he was right out on the road and had some kind of blinding light that, you know. But he's sixteen feet, he's sixteen feet back and the only thing to the west of him is a big front lawn of the court. Right?
I got the impression when he came into the building department that he was talking about the metal pole, which is the light, three lights or whatever, something like that.
Well, when he comes back with the cut sheets, we'll look at it. And if it's appropriate, we'll let it fly and if it's not appropriate, you know.
Well, we're not gonna leave it. Yeah, the morning they'll be back in the office.
What's that?
We're not doing we anymore once they get to that stage, they'll, they'll be.
No, if you wanna, I'll, we'll get it, I'll see it, send it to you guys.
I don't need to see it, it passes muster with the building department, that works for me.
Okay. So, we have the additional, the additional restrictions that are appropriate that we used for the emporium beer garden.
Right.
Which we specifically addressed, the music issue and all that stuff. Um, and we have it once Mr. Weeks has here, so.
Some of the overlap, but that's.
I'm sure they will, Mr. Weeks.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the application of James Bonato on fourteen West Main Street with the following conditions. Uh, a copy of the lease with Suffolk County shall be filed with the building department, uh, as part of the record. Um, the building department shall ultimately sign off on the capacity of the facility uh, and in particular shall assure that there's sufficient restroom capacity for the facility with its increased occupancy. Uh, there shall be no live music of any kind, uh, on the outside patio and no amplified music of any kind without a permit from the village board and trustees. Um, cut sheets of the proposed lighting fixtures shall be submitted to the building department for review prior to ultimate approval, uh, by the senior building inspector and chairman. And all lighting must be dark skies compliant. The emergency exit, as so-called, from the patio shall be located in the southwest corner of the patio, not southeast corner as is stated in the text of the plan. Uh, finally, the architectural review board, which shall, um, be ultimately responsible for approving, uh, any and all signage to be erected on the outdoor patio. And finally, um, all stipulations of a general nature that were placed on the application, uh, the grant, rather, for the emporium facility shall also be attached to this grant.
Motion by Mr. Weeks.
Second.
Second, Mr. Fleas, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's okay. I believe that is the close of our round. Business for the evening, I'll obtain motion return.
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Fleas, second by Mr. Weeks, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it. Gentlemen, thank you and ladies.